Good evening, welcome to the Select Board meeting of August 18th, sorry, 2025. My name is Diane Mahan, I'm Chair of the Select Board, and to my right, your left?
John Hurt.
Eric Hellman.
Juaner Diggin.
Steve De Corsi.
James Feeney, Town Manager.
Ashley Marr, Board Administrator.
And?
Michael Cunningham, Town Council, Remote.
Thank you for joining us on your vacation, this is quite a great vacation for you.
I'd love it, Madam Chair, thank you, yep.
We're going to go to the first agenda item, Discussion and Approval, the FY '26 Holiday Closures and Dates. And first time we're meeting in person, our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Director, Ramsha Beluch. And Ramsha, if you could, sit down at the microphone, introduce yourself, say your name correctly, because I didn't.
Good evening, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
So my name is Ramsha Beluch, Ram as in the drink, and the chur at the end is like chocolate, so Ramsha Beluch, and I'm the newish, not so new anymore, DEI Director. Good evening, everyone, thank you for making the time and space for this important conversation. So, as Diane mentioned, that we will be speaking about the holiday closures and the no public meetings schedule, I'll focus more on the no public meetings schedule, the goal behind it, and how it, you know, came to be that list. So, we had input from a community survey that my predecessor had conducted, practices in neighboring towns, and input from faith leaders. And the goal is pretty simple, but very important, and it is to be like intentional and thoughtful while planning public meetings, so residents and employees can, you know, celebrate days of significance without having to worry about, you know, missing key public discussions. And it also improves like participation and engagement when meetings do happen. And I'd also like to add that this is, you know, this is not concrete, this work is evolving and is collaborative, so I, you know, welcome suggestions that would make this list more reflective of, you know, our diverse community, while also like, you know, being mindful that we have enough opportunities to have spaces for these meetings. In addition to this list, that you see, there's also like an Excel sheet I have, which has 90-plus entries of like days of significance in various traditions and cultures, and it is more of an educational tool, like a good to know, you know, what your neighbors are doing, how they are celebrating, and at the moment, we're working on how to make that list public. And if you have the list in front of you, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. And I was also hoping that, one of the things I was talking to you earlier about, and the Town Manager was able to provide us with an update, is even though this is the first time here at the Select Board meeting, you've been with us for a couple of months now, and you've certainly picked up some programs that have been started, but also really initiated some new ones, along with the Diversity Equity and Inclusion, but also the disability component, which I think is a natural tie-in into the position in your office. And I've really been encouraged by what you've started doing that, and I was wondering if you could, since you're here, I know we were talking about the adaptive bicycle program that you started up at the rink, maybe if you could just share about what that is, where it is, it wasn't just one day, it's available all the times, and you had a nice, really nice story that you maybe could share with all of us.
Thank you, so it was a collaborative effort between the Office of ADI, our Reg Department, you know, Disability Commission, and our office was supporting this. So this was done through like a grant that we had secured from the, like Massachusetts Office on Disabilities, and we just thought that, you know, oftentimes when we're speaking about like DEI people with disabilities are often overlooked, and one way to ensure like engagement and participation is, you know, something as cherished as like the Minuteman Pathway, to make it more accessible. So, it's like a rental program, you can go on their recreation website, you can find ways, like, we ask for like a two-week notice, so we can ensure that there is staff to help like facilitate the rental. And we're also working on like after the event, you know, as I've mentioned, that this work is always evolving, you know, a Commissioner, a Disability Commissioner reached out to us about like improving safety mechanisms, and at the moment, we are working towards those, trying to ensure that there's like a living tutorial on like our website's, you know, ADA page, and also like the Reg Department's ADA page, where people can like read about like how to use, you know, these equipments safely, because that is also something that, you know, we need to consider.
That's great. Mr. Manager, did you have anything?
Sure. Thank you Chair Mahan, and thank you Director Beluch. So I think to take a step back, you know, one of, I guess, the intention of this particular agenda item this evening, and hoping for the Board's approval, is we're simply seeking to operationalize some inclusive practices that have been in effect for some time. I know this particular Board goes through, you know, great lengths to try not to schedule its meetings, when we go through that exercise, to try not to create intentionally any conflicts with days of significance. So I consider, you know, this effort that's before you this evening, as well as if you were to look at this evening's agenda, you will note that we have started including pronouns and honorifics, especially for appointments, just to, again, operationalize some of the things we're already doing, but to make it more foundational in our practice. So we thought that publishing something that's approved annually, or at least for each fiscal year, that would recognize and call out certain dates that we should avoid public meetings or public hearings, because certain groups would necessarily be excluded, would be sort of a step forward with establishing an equitable policy. So that's why it's before the Board this evening, and this is something I could envision generating each year, and then disseminating to the various Boards, Committees, and Commissions that are appointed by the Select Board and Town Managers, so they would have this for reference when scheduling their meetings. One thing I would say is, obviously, these are recommended dates, there would most certainly be instances, take the Zoning Board of Appeals, for example, where, right there on a very strict, statutorily-defined timeline for when they get an application and have to hold a meeting, and at times, right, if they needed to hold a meeting, they may simply have to do that under statute, even if perhaps it fell on one of these dates. So, we weren't in a position to assume that they should be mandatory, given the various circumstances that can arise with our, you know, nearly 80 Boards, Committees, and Commissions, so I just wanted to note that for the Board's consideration this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do appreciate it's going to go forward, but as we plan our yearly schedule, as we talk about setting the election or town meeting date, as well as, I appreciate the asterisks are in there, because I know a lot of the holy days, sunset to sunrise the next day, really needs to be taken into consideration, and sometimes, and I think having this will make us more aware of the fact that we need to be mindful of that going forward. So, if I could get a more, oh, Mr. Hellman?
Please continue.
No?
I move approval, and I'd like to add my gratitude, and also to say that it was really nice to meet you at the Adaptive Trike Ribbon Cutting a couple of weeks ago, that was a great event, and I encourage the public and my Board colleagues to stop by the rink and see the shed, it's really nice and big, there's some great machinery in there, and there's room for more, and I think it is a great program, so thank you, and the big team that worked together to make that happen. And I like this proposal, I think that, looking at this, the recommended of hearing blackout dates, we have tried to not schedule meetings on some of these, but it's been haphazard. So I think it's really helpful, not only to have the ones that we may be aware of in front of us, but holidays that I wasn't aware of, and I think that's directly responsive to the community members, and I really like how this is pitched, which is that this makes local government as inclusive as we can of other people, of everyone in the community. So I'm glad to see this, and appreciate that it's a work in progress, and we'll get better as we go along.
Thank you. Mr. Hurt?
I second the motion, and that, as of today, I'm going to be at the rink every day for eight months, so I will check that out. But no, I'm happy to support this, I, you know, certainly, one of our goals is always to be inclusive, and, you know, we go, I know, at least with us, with our, we schedule our meetings as we sit here on camera, and we're on our phones like, oh, this date, so it's very helpful for us to have something in front of us that is a full list of all the significant dates, and, you know, I'm sure the list will expand at some point, and we do our best to accommodate this, but, you know, it's certainly something that will help us, and help us promote the community goals. And next year, you can check out the significance of April 22nd, see if it gets onto the list. It's birthday.
Oh.
Yeah, my birthday.
I was gonna say, I thought it was your birthday, okay. Any further comments?
I'll just add, well, first off, make sure the Town Moderator gets this list, you know, for how we manage town meeting, but also, it's good to meet you again, you know, and we had fun, you know, that day out on, in the center, you know, doing the collaborative drawing, so, so, it's a really good way to meet someone and get to know them, and you really have quite, quite the diverse background, and so, so thank you for joining us, and also, thanks for operationalizing the pronouns, because most of the time, you don't need them, but when you do, you're really happy they're there, so, so, thank you for that.
Mr. De Corsi.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just want to welcome you to Director Beluch, that you, before the meeting, I know you've been here for a while, thank you for your work, and I'm happy to support Mr. Hellman's motion as well.
Thank you. If no further questions or comments, or a motion by Mr. Hellman, seconded by Mr. Hurt, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, you may not even vote, thank you so much. Next, we have Discussion and Approval, we have our Superintendent Schools, Dr. Holman, and our colleague, the Chair of the School Committee, Ms. Morgan, here with us tonight. Discussion, and hopefully, approval.
Yes. Good evening, members of the Select Board, thank you for having me. Am I able to pull, I can pull up the presentation for you?
That would be helpful, yeah. I do have some materials and numbers I just wanted to share with everybody this evening, and we're here to talk about what is not frankly, one of my favorite topics to talk about, but is very important to a lot of our staff, and to members of the community who visit Arlington High School, and who have experienced some challenges with regards to parking. I want to begin by stating what the request is, just so we're all clear about what we're talking about, and then go through a little bit of why this is coming to you. I also wanted to start by thanking Town Manager Feeney for the support that we've already received with some temporary parking support through construction, and some of what we've been learning as we've gone through that, is just how constrained we are going to be at the conclusion of the project, which is wrapping up here soon. So, can move to the next slide. The request we're going to have is for 100 parking spaces, which we would assign to specific staff, and I'm happy to answer any questions about how that operates, we've learned a bit about it, because we've had a couple of trial runs of this, both during the school year and over the summer, to support some of the summer school staffing that we had running at the high school. And that would be for 183 days, only on school days, for parking from 8:00 AM to 4:15 PM in the restricted neighborhood parking zones closest to AHS, but I also want to note that that's not necessarily where people park if they have the pass. They'll park where they can find something closer to the high school often, and sometimes that's not in the restricted zones, because if you go about two blocks back, it's unrestricted. Typically, in that unrestricted zone, there, you know, it's just not as, it's further away, and so if somebody's running a little bit late, and they know they have a pass, it gives us a little more flexibility. The passes would ensure sufficient parking for the staff who work out of AHS, which is AHF staff, but we'll also talk about some other staff that are there, and for staff and visitors in attached offices and program spaces during the school day. And I just want to go over a few notes, if you go to the next slide quickly, and then we can have a conversation. I'd like to share some data to support the request, some measures we've already taken to address the parking challenges at the high school, measures for you and us to consider for the future, for any input or feedback you might have, and then if the Committee, if the Select Board is amenable to it, a possible approval of neighborhood parking at AHS during those 183 days of the year. So if you go to the next slide, there, here's a map of the property, and this is the final count for parking on the property. And there is a west lot that includes 90 spaces, but six of those are EV, we're pretty strict about the EV, we have a policy at schools about the EV being for EV cars, and being also available most, to staff during the school day, but available to the public as soon as the school day is over. And obviously, those are restricted to cars that are EV and that are charging, they have to be plugged in, and if they are not, we work directly with APD to address that, if they have a hang tag and they're not plugged in, we go and find the staff member, and we say, you've either got to move it, or it's got to be plugged in. The north drive, which goes behind, runs behind the high school and connects up with Schuler Court, will have 42 spots, but it is a very accessible drive, and nine of those are ADA, accessible parking spots, and so you can subtract that from sort of what's available to anybody driving a car, and then the east lot will have 63, and Schuler Court will have 19, four of those are EV to our ADA. And so at the end of that list, we have 214 parking spots, some of which are not accessible to all parkers, depending on what kind of car they drive, or whether or not they need accessible parking. If you go to the next slide, these are our daily FTEs. Now, I want to open with a caveat that not all of these people are driving a car every single day, if they live in Arlington, they might be walking, and we have tried to encourage as many people as possible to take alternative means to work as we can. But this is just the raw numbers of staff we know go to the high school every single day, and a little bit of an overview of some of the regular visitors that we're used to having at the high school every single day. There are 224 Arlington High School and Lab, which is a program housed in the high school, teachers and staff at the high school Monday through Friday, and that's reflected in our budget documentation around, and it's a reflection of enrollment, which has been growing at the high school for the last several years, that's how we staff the building. And that's just for the high school. Then there are 48 Central Office and K-12 Curriculum Directors with offices in the high school, so there are Curriculum Directors also that have offices outside the high school, they're in the visitors list, not reflected in this number, this is just the people with an office at the high school. Monotomy and Child Care Program have 43 staff, the Child Care Program is a program that takes care of staff's children, it's a benefit that we offer our staff, it's paid, but they are housed in the Monotomy preschool, and then there are also Child Care Programs at satellite spots at some of the other schools throughout the district. So their staff and Monotomy staff is 43 additional staff. IT and Facilities have about six people that are onsite regularly to maintain data systems that are housed at the high school, are part of the staff that have an office at the high school, and most of those are Facilities, are custodians that are located at the high school, because most of the IT staff is in the DPW building, and then Arlington Community Education, ACE, is also housed at the high school, they have eight. So that totals up to 329 staff members, who are daily FTEs at the high school, and 214 spots, some of which are accessible to everybody, and some of which are not. And just that math, if you consider that increasingly, our staff don't live in Arlington, or don't live close enough to not drive, even if we have folks carpool, even if we do our best, we simply do not have the parking available onsite to accommodate all of the workers and staff who need to be onsite every single day. In addition to that, we have challenges associated with folks who are expected and regular visitors to the high school, because we want this to be a well-used space. So we have families who come to register or meet with me, with other administrators at Central Office, AHS, Monotomy, who come to the Welcome Center to register, we built the Welcome Center into the high school, we want people to be able to come and get help with registration, we're particularly busy this time of year. We have staff and community members, including the School Committee, who attend meetings during the school day, and attend professional development in the School Committee Room. The School Committee Room and the spaces in Central Office are often the only available spaces during the school day to have a meeting. So if the kids are in the buildings, every space is utilized, and when we need to have a meeting, we'll often fall to the School Committee Room and use that space to have meetings, because kids are in our other spaces. And then K-12 Directors and other operational administrators are often coming in and out, because they need to do business at the high school, they need to meet with people, or they need to supervise teachers and do observations at the high school, and we also have itinerant staff who teach some classes at AHS, but might not be primarily located there, so they're not reflected in that 200 number. That number is a reflection that does not capture any district staff that might have like providing services at the high school, but they also provide services at this other school. So those folks in that expected regular visitors category are not accounted for, but are routinely coming to the high school, which is placing even more strain on the limited parking that is there. Go to the next slide, let me. We have done a few things to try to alleviate some of the strain through construction, we have really messaged a lot of encouragement when it comes to carpooling, biking, taking mass transit. Like I said, one of our challenges is that we have a lot more people living a little further away, and who are not able to live in Arlington or immediate neighboring towns, so that gets a little tricky, but we do have a lot of folks who live in Cambridge and will bike in, and some staff that do take alternative means of transportation. We've collaborated with APD to understand any complaints that come to us regarding parking from neighborhoods across Mass Ave. We want to be really good neighbors, and so anybody we're giving a parking pass to, we have really clear expectations, and we've told APD, if you see people violating this, we want to know. They have hang tags regardless, if they are a high school staff member, they have a hang tag with a number on it, we know who has which number on that hang tag, and we will find them and talk to them about how they've parked their car, if it's a problem, and they would have that in addition to these passes. They have identified some challenges with the parking of student vehicles, they have not been able yet to identify illegally parked vehicles with the AHS staff hang tags that I mentioned, and we're working directly with them on enforcement of any parking violations that we think would be problematic, or make it difficult for our neighbors to have us using the street in their neighborhoods. We did have a temporary agreement with CBS for some spaces at the back of their lot during construction, that has since expired, they gave us about 24 spots, the difference between what I think is what we've already had, and what we're asking for, is that 24 spots that we otherwise had at CBS, because my understanding is that we had 50, and then we added 16, and I think that's the most that you've approved. We also then had a separate batch this summer, and so, but then we also had the 24 at CBS, and that agreement has since expired. We would, we could pay, potentially, to rent some of those spaces, and that would be one of the fallbacks that we would explore, should this not be approved, but we wanted to take this route first. And we've also approached additional vendors on Mill Street and along Mass Ave to ask about renting parking, we only got an agreement from CBS, and they were gracious enough to say, you don't need to pay for it for now, while you're under construction, but we anticipate that would shift if we asked them again. Some measures to consider, we have looked into grants to explore the design of a parking structure, we didn't get the grant, but it was, and it would have just been for the design, but we were included in a Mass CEC school bus program that is designed to sort of assess options for alternative parking in town, which I'm sure Mr. Feeney and I are happy to keep you updated on as we move through that program, it basically gives free technical assistance. And we're considering an assessment of whether we, it would make sense for us to incentivize MBTA or Bike to Work programming for staff to help alleviate some of the parking, and we're of course, really committed to doing whatever it is we can do to alleviate some of the strain, as we know that we have a lot of people in town, and not a whole lot of places to put cars, or things, or people, so we're happy to partner in whatever way it would make the most sense to do so. That's all I have for you, happy to take any questions, or talk about implementation as you like. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Diggin's.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I am supportive of this, I just want to make sure that you're going to get me what you need, meaning that you're not a, that, make sure that 100 is enough, me, for first off, I mean, so, I just want to understand, when visitors come, me, where do they park?
So, at the moment, we've gotten very good at inventing parking spaces, which we would actually like to try to stop doing, as much as possible. Right now, we had blocked off some visitor spaces during construction, and we posted signs that said, this is clearly for visitors. We don't reserve parking spaces for any employee, myself included, and some of that is just because we know we have employees who are out and about, and none of us want to take up a parking spot if we're going to be at another school, so that somebody can use that spot. We have told people that they can park in the neighborhoods across the street, in any of the two-hour areas that happen to be open, if they're visiting for a short period of time. Our challenge with staff is that that's difficult, because they have to be there for a more extended period of time, and if they're itinerant, some of the, so one of the things we have to consider is who would we give this to, to alleviate the most onsite parking. One of the challenges we have is if any itinerant staff were to get the pass, then, and they're on a tight time schedule, they would have to be close to the high school, and that's where the two-hour parking and alleviation of that limit is helpful with these passes. But we will tell people, park in the neighborhoods across the street if you can't find something, we'll, and it's through construction, been more or less, what's the most open right now, because it's also been a moving target, we've had parking over here this week, and not over there, but then it moved over there and not over here. So wherever it's openest is what we'll often tell visitors, and then the neighborhood across the street is a fallback option for folks.
Okay, all right, you know, so, I mean, it seems like the ideal, though, would be to make it such that, be, there would be spots where visitors would know that they could go, so, I mean, what would you say is the average number of visitors you get, I mean, a day, I mean, and what would you say is the maximum number of visitors you could expect, you know?
We would have to analyze that, we do keep a log in the Central Office, and I don't have the numbers offhand, but it would be easy enough for us to look at them a day and say, okay, we have about this many in the Central Office, we know that we have this many come in for meetings at Monotomy, and there are meeting-heavy days and meeting-light days, depending on the schedule for the day. So that's something we would probably try to figure out before designating visitor spots, but right now, we don't have a plan to designate visitor spots, because we're so worried about the ability of staff to park in spots.
Right, I understand, well, I mean, so you could work on that, because I mean, I think the ideal would be to try to get you the ability to reserve the maximum number of spaces, and then modulate the way they're used, me, based on the average, so you, you pretty much know when you're going to have those max days, I would imagine, and then when you're not having those max days, then you could use those spots, you know, in another way, you know, that would, I mean, make the pressure on the permanent spots, meaning the neighborhoods, I mean, less, you know, so, so I'd say, let's, let's find out what that number is, I mean, I'm not going to say that we should not make a decision tonight, I mean, for your request of 100, you know, but, but I'm certainly in favor of getting you what you need, I mean, in terms of MBTA, you know, be, first off, be, as you know, be, of the students, I mean, the problem, be, is when everyone's coming in at the same time, be, you're trying to create capacity for the peak of the peak, be, and, and it's really hard for the MBTA to do that, it's hard for any system to do that, first off, it's particularly hard for the MBTA to do it, you know, and the nature of the 77, which is the main route in Arlington, is that it is the, is the only route of its kind, you know, in this area, I mean, and so when something goes wrong on the T, either with the red line, be, or with another bus line that has a, what they call is a longer headway, I mean, like, so the spacing in between the buses is longer, if something happens, the 77 is the bus they're going to pull, is the route they're going to pull a bus off of, and when that's happening, you know, during rush hour, it just causes havoc, I mean, for, for everyone who's using the 77, so that's, creates a reliability issue, and as you know, people, I mean, design their, their commute based on the worst scenario, I mean, so if they feel that I can't really count on getting there when I need to be there by public transit, they're going to use a car, understandably, so, so there's that, but in terms of making it a little more affordable, I predict the T still has like the perks system, I mean, so you can, it's not a whole lot, but it's something, you know, and, and then for people who are very low income, be, there is the means tested, so there are some alternatives there, but let's figure out, I mean, what is the maximum you need, and try and get you what you need, because, I mean, you don't simply want it, you need it, I mean, and let's get you what you need, that's it, thank you.
Mr. Hurt?
I just want to clarify the ask, I'm sorry if this is clear to everyone else, but are you asking us to reserve certain on-street parking spaces in the neighborhoods?
No, so the, the way this has worked, when we've done, we've done a couple temporary trial runs, and so the ask, part of why I'm here, is, you know, thank you, Town Manager Feeney, has asked before, and, but this is more like, we need this for the school year, because we're about to open, we're at the end of the project, and we know we just need it to be set, however, it's a pass that they display on the dashboard, that, like, if they were to park in a two-hour zone, it exempts them from getting a ticket in that two-hour zone, but a lot of them, like I said, don't necessarily park in the two-hour zone, they'll park in the first spot closest they can find a spot, and that might not be in the two-hour zone, so it's not saying, this is your spot.
Yep, that makes sense to me, so I'm completely fine with the request, I was thinking in my head, are we telling somebody that they can't park in front of the house because we gave away this spot, if that's the case, then I think this is fine.
Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, and Dr. Holman, thank you for the presentation, and nice to see you this evening, and Ms. Morgan. Yeah, I'm supportive of issuing permits, one thing I wanted to ask you about, though, in terms of expected visitors to the high school, we know there is a student population school, we know there is a student population that drives to school, and they often use these streets. And so, and, and, you know, being candid, the enforcement hasn't been uniform. I think there's been a recognition that there is a certain population of student that needs to drive, or, you know, some choose to, but some are between work or maybe practice obligations off-site, park in that area. And so, it, what, if anything, have you considered for, for students? Or what, what's the message to students as far as parking goes?
We've talked about this. You want to begin?
I can talk about this because I have students who are drivers, and they, they hit some of those, like, things. Like, I have a kid who needs to get to work at 3:15. I have a younger child who goes to school across town. I work full-time. Sometimes I'm like, no, no, you, you have to go pick him up. Like, that's what we just need to do to make our family work. So I think that ultimately, the kids are really savvy, right? And they know where there is available parking, and it's just marginally further out. They shouldn't be parking in the two-hour zones anyway, really. I mean, because they can get, they could get ticketed there because they're not going to have a placard. So I think the impact on students, I, I think that they felt it certainly starting in February, once there were more staff that were needing to park in those spots across from the high school, and they all got pushed out a little bit further. But they're, you know, they're out two blocks now, two and a half blocks. So they can, they can find, they can find the parking, and they're really in spots that aren't two hours anyway. So, you know, I, I think the kids who need to find it are gonna, they, they do, they find a spot. It's, they're kind of like over there, right? I, I think it was probably surprising for some neighbors come February because where the end of the AHS sort of spread was, got pushed out another, like, block, block and a half, once the, some of the two-hour spots were being, you know, that, that teachers were taking up more of those spaces.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's the one area where I, I remain sympathetic to the student, student drivers, and it is a little further and, and, but I, I think I'd like some feedback on that as this program goes along, because the other thing I would say, I don't think there are 100 spaces, you tell me, that are restricted right now. So you're, you're going to have people who have stickers. Some days, they're going to be able to park in a two-hour zone. Some days, they're going to be out there too. So it, there, there is an effect here on, on, on the rest of the, rest of the neighborhood. And I understand the numbers that Dr. Homan presented to us. It's a, it's a real problem that there are limitations there, and, and, you know, absent a CVS or a part of Stop &amp; Shop, but you're just picking up a few spaces here or there. So it's, it's, and I'm not saying you're going to be able to do anything up at Stop &amp; Shop. One question, just in terms of visitors and, and parking, I know in front of the high school now is just pick up, drop off and pick up. Is there any consideration, not between eight and nine and, and 1:30 and three, to allow that for visitor parking, maybe to relieve some of that burden?
Yes. So one of the things that we've explored and even used on a somewhat trial basis was some of the directors who would go and come back and go and come back, is like, if you can't find something, but you've got to be in for a meeting, like, maybe we, there's a spot, there's a zone that we have to keep open, and it's not super well-marked right now. So we've only done it with staff for right now, but we could explore marking a couple visitor spots, given that that worked out okay and still left room if we were to have a, need to have a fire truck pull up in front. They would be able to do that. It's, the tricky part of that is, you really can't hit the dismissal. You can't hit, pick up and drop off and have the, any of that blocked without creating a huge traffic challenge on Mass Ave. But the answer to that is yes, and one of the things that the visitor spots, once we demarcate them, will be useful for, is that we're also trying to tell people, go into the programming door that you're actually visiting. That can get tricky if you're parked on the opposite side of Mass Ave, but you're visiting Central Office. You're, of course, going to go in the front door of AHS and not walk all the way around to the Central Office door. And so something like that would be helpful for the high school to push visitors front, to the front, so that visitors to Monotomy, Central Office, Athletic Wing, or ACE are parking towards the back, or we're sort of limiting those back visitor spots. That's something that we've used, trialed, and will probably consider marking out.
Okay, thank you. And, and, Madam Chair, I just would conclude, I'm generally supportive, but I, I do think this is something that needs to continuously be monitored to, to, to look at other users, whether it's visitors, whether it's staff, looking for their locations, because I, I am concerned about the cumulative impact on the neighborhood and, and for the third time for students. Thank you.
Well, I think the interesting thing with students, Ray, is that we'll never have fewer student drivers than we do on the first day of school.
Yeah.
Right? Because we've graduated, all the seniors are gone, they, most of them could drive, right? So we're never going to have fewer drivers than we have, like, in two weeks. And we'll never have more than we do at the end of the, of June. So it's one of those problems that actually just gets progressively worse as the school year goes on, and then it resets again. So this is sort of the time to, like, try to, to get a handle on it and then wait until, and then it just, then there are just more of them.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Hamlet. Waiting patiently, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for coming. Do we know how many parking spaces there are on these restricted streets?
I have not counted the parking spots.
You have other things to do?
I'm actually, I'm actually skeptical that there are 100 in those restricted zones. What this does is give the first access to those to the teachers so that it's not, we're not all pushed out into the rest of the neighborhood.
Mr. Feeney, do you have any guess about, about that?
I can't say that I do, Mr. Hamlet.
Yeah, well, I guess if I really want to know, I'll go count myself, but.
We have a map with it marked by color.
Well, that's helpful to know, because I think in some respects, the number matters less i- if, if, you know, if, I was going to ask sort of what percentage are, are we going to be using of all those spaces and what's the neighborhood going to look like? But, you know, if there aren't even 100 there, Mr. Decorsi.
Well, no, I, I'm nodding my head. You know, I, I think what you're going to see, Ms. Hamlet, is 100 staff is going to park in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
50 or 60, that's probably the number that can park in the streets, are going to get those spots.
Right.
And that's going to rotate depending on how, how early people get to work.
Well, before I moved to Arlington, I had a car in Boston, and I'm well familiar with that, having more street permits issued than spaces exist. So I think that's the situation we're talking about. And, you know, I'm, I'm fine with this. I do just want to be, I think we should be very aware, I agree with my colleague, Mr. Decorsi, that we should keep a really close look on the impact on students and on the neighborhood. I know that, I mean, we've, my time in the board, we've, we've had some complaints, sometimes strong ones from the neighbors, and it's, it's tough for them when the students know this park there, but we also have this real problem that we have to solve for you. So, and I think that's fine. The other thing, and I'm happy to make a motion, I think, if you like, Madam Chair, just to make, make sure that we get the right motion here, because I think it's a little bit different than what the, the big picture that was on the slide. So you clarify with Mr. Hurd, this is not really assigning parking spaces, but this is issuing 100 permits. And it says at the start of the school year, and then it says 183 days. Does that mean, does that imply that the end date would be the end of the school year?
Teachers are required to be onsite for 183 days of the school year, so it would start on the teacher days, which are next week.
From teacher day to teacher to the, to, for that span of year.
Teacher's final day, yeah.
All right. And is that, for, for the folks implementing this, is that specific enough to implement if we vote that?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, okay. Okay, fine. So I will, I will move approval of that proposal as articulated.
Did I just have one other question?
Mm-hmm.
And so I, we talked about the neighborhoods, and, but then in the memo that we had, it says exempt any non-metered space. So does this include spaces on Mass Ave? Well, my concern is if it's, I mean, we have non-metered spaces in front of Arlington House Pizza, and if all of a sudden they lose their parking all day, that's a problem. There's not tons of storefronts there, but there are a string of storefronts in that area that if all of a sudden there was.
Yeah.
Someone was able to park there all day, that's a pretty juicy spot, I would think, in front of, like, the Cobbler.
We had clarified with staff, because this had come up, I recall, and you had clarified with the high school staff, that it was not intended to take up spaces that are otherwise used for the businesses along Mass Ave. And we've been very clear that this is a neighborhood space, it's not on Mass Ave, on the other side of past Mass Ave with staff. Could they conceivably use the pass for those spots? I, I think.
Well, I'm wondering if we can.
Happy to chime in. So we were permitting, we were permitting staff to park on the south side of Mass Ave, starting from the old burying ground up to in front of the parking lot that serves the bank. So it was with a use that didn't, wasn't a business use that didn't require parking, Whole Foods, which has its own parking lot, and then in front of the banks, which also have their own parking lots. But we dissuaded or discouraged use on the north side of Mass Ave in front of the active business block for those temporary periods.
Okay, and.
The messaging.
Encouraging and discouraging is one thing, but, you know.
It can be restricted, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I would think, you know, even on the south side, there's a strip of storefronts. And, I mean, if I was a business, I wouldn't want somebody to have the ability to park in front of my storefront at all times. Now, where CVS is, it's like, yeah, they, those are lower priority on-street parking, but, you know, I, there's a string of businesses right across from Jason Russell House who don't have, like, we, we've taken some of their parking out for parklets.
You put a parklet, yeah.
We've put new, a few things in there that I think they're going to need some of those additional spaces. So, I mean, I think, I'm open to my colleagues, but I think, you know, Mass Ave really shouldn't be fair game for this because I think all of those spaces, to some, one way or another, could be in high demand.
We said, don't park on Mass Ave.
Yeah.
On Mass Ave, after that set of exchanges. I'm not sure whether or not folks did, but we can make that clear, and we can check it at the start of the school year, just to reinforce that expectation.
The permits can be restricted in their sort of geographic validity.
Yeah. Well, I guess I would put that to the board, whether or not we want to just say, we want to discourage parking in those spots or not permit it.
Can I ask, because I'm willing to amend my motion if the board wants to. If we, if the motion was to exclude Mass Ave, would that be acceptable? You know, if, if the permits specifically by our vote excluded Mass Ave, or excluded meter, meter spaces, like, which is all of Mass Ave, you know, would that, would that be sufficient?
Well, it already excludes meter spaces. That's what I was saying, is portion.
Oh, the portions that are not meters? So, okay, yeah, so, yeah.
The meters are on the side.
So if, if Mass Ave was off the table, would that still be, feel workable?
Yes. We're happy for any support we get.
So would you amend?
So, yeah, I'm happy to amend that if, if there's support from my colleagues and see what they, what they think.
So Diggins has a thumb up.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second to Mr.?
So I'll amend my motion to.
Second.
To approve that, but, but to exclude Mass Ave.
Now I just need a second to Mr. Hamlet's amended motion by Mr. Hurd. And I was hearing two things, Mr. Diggins' questions regarding visitor parking, and maybe I'll leave it to the superintendent and the chair to when you think is an appropriate point, and it doesn't necessarily have to be an agenda item, but if the board could get, on the short term, the answer to Mr. Diggins' question, you know, through email, but on the long term, either after February or April vacation, when you think it's appropriate, and I don't, or a different time, because you know, you know, if, we can kind of revisit this, with, with the caveat that if something else comes up in the interim, that, then the board will certainly address it, but, you know, maybe after February or April vacation, an update on the parking program, an update on the grant program that we didn't apply for the design part, but it seems like another door sort of opened, so the town manager and superintendent and school committee chair should have a report on that. So in the short term, if you could get us the information on the visitor, and emails, is, is that okay? It's, it's fine.
Low priority at this point, given the rest of the discussion, so, yeah, thanks.
Okay, and with that, I think we're okay with town council? He's nodding to say yes.
Yeah, the, the amended motion is now before the board. It's been seconded.
So any further discussion on, if not a motion by Mr. Hamlet, seconded by Mr. Hurd, as amended, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you. Thanks for joining us again. We're turning this into a regular thing. Happy school opening in a couple of weeks. Next, we'll go to consent agenda, minutes of meeting, July 21st, 2025. Requests for contracted drain layer license, Rahal's Landscaping out of Newton, Mass. Requests for a special one-day beer and wine, August 30th, 2025, Robbins Memorial Town Hall for a private event. Sylvia Luzzi requests special one-day beer and wine license, August 30th, 2025, at the Roasted Granola for a private event. Ellen Eisner requests one-day beer and wine license, September 6th, Robbins Memorial Town Hall for a private event. Shannon Alessis, Alessandrone and Charlie Driver requests for a special one-day beer and wine license, September 7th, Robbins Library Private Event. J.B. Maxwell requests for a special one-day beer and wine license, September 14th, 2025, Whittimo Robbins House for a private event. Haley Powers. Free parking in the Russell Common Lot and Railroad Lot for Arlington Town Day, September 20th, 2025. Temporary no parking signs on that Ave on September 20th, 2025. Certifying Statement Asset Management Grant for the DPW. Arlington Eats Turkey Trot 5K Race on November 2nd, 2025. Thank you, Andy Doan, Arlington Eats, and our board administrator, Ashley Marr, for coming up with that policy and for Ms. Doan being so patient. Special Event National Coffee Day with a Cup Day, October 1st, 2025. Suzanne Trunfio, the social media coordinator out of the Arlington Police Department, and the reappointment with the Human Rights Commission, Rajiv Soneja. Is there a motion? Mr. Diggins?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
There's a second by Mr. Decorsi. Is there any thing anyone would like to comment on? If not, seeing the town manager and town council not waving a finger at me on a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Decorsi, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous vote. We now go to agenda item 17, Appointment Clean Energy Future Committee, Dr. Sam Polk. Is Dr. Polk here in person or on Zoom?
I would just ask if he is here on Zoom.
If you, if Dr. Polk, if you are on Zoom, if you could raise your hand and let us know. If not, I will just come back to that. We'll go to licenses and permit, agenda item 18, For Approval Outdoor Dining and Retail Permit License from Stephen Douglas and Bedros Kaya, Rush Bowls on Broadway.
Good evening.
Aye.
It's my understanding you're asking for, I think it's, is it three parking spots in front of businesses, or is it three parking spots in the middle in front of businesses?
Originally was three parking spots, and then I believe there was a conversation, and we reduced it to two. So now we're asking for two parking spaces.
Spaces.
In front of Rush Bowls.
And do you want to explain what it is you'll be setting up out there if approved?
Yeah, so we're proposing to barricade, if you want to, lack of terms, in front of Rush Bowls and have four sets of tables and chairs for outdoor dining. And what we're hoping to gain from this is, we all see what Arlington Center happens when school gets out, and so we're just kind of offer like a, a safe place for the kids to get out of school and come over and get a smoothie or a bowl and have a place to sit down. Instead of using, like, Donut Villa's outdoor dining or, like, any other places, which we don't feel is fair, so we're hoping to get our own. So there's two parking spots out front that we're hoping to get the approval to put tables and chairs.
Okay, and they're, they're in front of you and/or Brickstone?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I'm sorry to ask all the questions.
That's all right, no, no, no. No, so if you look at a map, there's a handicap parking spot kind of in front of Fusion Taste, and then we're going to skip a spot to allow somebody to park, to go into Fusion Taste, and then we're going to skip a spot to allow somebody to park, to go into Fusion Taste, and then we're asking for the two spots to the left of that, which is right in front of Rush Bowls slash Brickstone.
Okay.
Well.
Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, given the adjustment to your original request, I mean, I think it concerns me, posed by our economic development coordinator, has been addressed, so I'm happy to make the motion to approve the request.
Okay, Mr. Hurd?
Just a question. This is a timeframe for parklets, right? Whereas when, sometime in the fall, all parklets.
It's April to November. It's pretty much the whole year.
Yeah.
Right now, and as we change that in our policy discussion.
Yeah, I'm just saying, as we're getting, was sort of at the end of the timeframe. But I love Rush Bowls, been using it, like the, the protein smoothie. Yeah, I mean, I know Fusion had a parklet there before. It, it had a little bit of pushback from some of the other businesses, but, you know, we, all of Arlington, we're allowing parking, and it's a freshly repaved area. So, I mean, I'm certainly, you know, I think it would be out of character for us to, to not grant a parklet for somebody that's asking, and it's one of those kind of stretches of businesses where all these other businesses get the outside dining pretty easily because the plaza's in front of them, and then there's other businesses that have parking in front of them. But, you know, I think, you know, we've been pretty generous about allowing parking, parklets in businesses that think that it can help their, their business model, so I'd be happy to support as well. I'll second the motion.
Okay. Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for clarification, this would just be through November 1 of this year?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, because I, I agree with the finished argument that Mr. Hurd raised. I do think we have heard about other parklets through the year that we may be taking a fresh look throughout town, but I don't, I agree, probably wouldn't be fair to you to start that review now before the end of the year, so I'd be supportive as well.
Okay, any further discussion or comments? And I, and I agree, moving forward, when we have our goals meeting Thursday night, and I know the select board staff, Britton and Ms. Marr, as well as the town manager, have gotten some comparative information for us to look at, but that would be a discussion for next year, not this year. So, any further questions or comments, if not on a motion by Mr. Diggins, and I'll leave it to town council. If I'm doing something, I shouldn't just wave a finger, you don't even have to raise a hand. Seconded by Mr. Hurd, thumbs up. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote.
Thank you. I just had a question while we're here. Can you go back to that screen that showed the parking?
Sure.
Please.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's actually an old picture, which is great. So, in front of Fusion Taste.
Sorry, just give me a.
That's all right. They had some orange, I believe, like water-filled plastic barricades. And I'm just wondering, where do those, is that on us? Does the town supply that? And then, how do we schedule that? Who do we talk to?
We do, yeah. We would supply the orange barricade barriers.
Okay.
We would coordinate with the DPW department when you're ready to set up.
Okay.
And they would block off the spots for you.
You're likely going to be responsible for filling them. Usually, we can only move them empty, so.
Sounds good.
But do we need to wait until the painting is finished? Probably yes, right?
Yes, all line striping would need to be completed before we're allowing any more installations back.
It's not finished right now, so.
Correct. All right, sounds good.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to agenda item 19, a common victual license, NC Arlington LLC doing business as New City Micro Creamery on Broadway. Jason Kleinerman.
Via Zoom, Mrs. Trump.
Will be joining us via Zoom. Thank you.
When you're ready, if you just want to unmute your mic. Perfect.
Hi, how are you?
Good, good evening.
If you could just give the board a brief description, description of the New City Micro Creamery?
Uh, so, we're a 10-year-old ice cream store that started in Hudson. We make all of our own ice cream, and we used to make it in our Hudson location all the way from scratch, using locally sourced ingredients and milk. We expanded to Cambridge. Some of you guys might be familiar with our central square location, which has been open for, going on eight years, I think, at this point, seven or eight years. And we've also expanded into Sudbury. We changed our factory at some point, so now we make all of our ice cream in Shirley, and we do wholesale distribution through Whole Foods and a number of grocers in 11 states. And we're, we've had our eye on the Arlington area for quite a while. I actually grew up next door in Belmont, and as, as with one of my partners, and we found this location, which was formerly Abbott's, and was an ice cream store, and we thought it was a great location, so we were able to strike a deal with the landlord, and we're trying to bring our ice cream to Arlington now. And we specialize in ultra-premium, all-natural ice cream, and we have a lot of, you know, interesting flavors like baklava and dulce de leches, but we also do traditional flavors, flavors like chocolate, vanilla, cookies and cream, strawberry, and the like. And that's pretty much it. We're really excited to join the Arlington business community. Actually, Rush Bowls is our neighbor, Firestone Pizza, so we're excited to, you know, join that block over there with Donut Villa and Cafe Nero and all the great businesses there.
And I can tell you, there's been chatter on the various different social media lists with the loss of the ice cream business up in the heights, and before that, down in the center. So, people are already talking about this particular place, waiting for it to open, so that's, that's really exciting. Any questions or motions for my colleagues?
Move approval?
Mr. Hurd?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hamlet. Mr. Diggins?
I'll just add that, I, I really appreciate it, your bios. You are three interesting people with interesting backgrounds, and I mean that in the most positive way, and the flavors, I mean, I'm salivating over the flavors, and I think you got to give Scoop its gooery, run for their money. So, more power to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, with that, any further questions or comments, if not on a motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Hamlet. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. We will now go to Citizens Open Forum. If there's anyone on Zoom that would like to speak under open forum, please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom. Except in unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the board shall neither be acted upon nor is decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. It should be noted that there is a three-minute time limit to present a concern or request. Is there anyone here who would like to, in the chambers, speak on, under Citizens Open Forum? Is, any hands?
There's one hand raised. I'm going to promote them now.
Okay, if you could recognize that person, and once we allow you in, if you could just state your name and address for the record?
I'm going to promote Susan Stamps.
Susan Stamps. We'll let you know, or you let us know when you're here, Susan.
And then, there's one additional hand for Michael Ruderman after that.
Okay, I can see Ms. Stamps. I don't know if she can hear us.
There we go. Hey, everybody. I, I just wanted to say that I noticed in, in the agenda that the Conservation Commission had submitted a letter regarding the fishing line problems at Hills Pond at Monotomy Rocks Park, and I didn't know if you folks were going to be discussing it tonight, and, but even if you were, it wasn't probably going to be any kind of a hearing, so that maybe we wouldn't have an opportunity to say anything, we, meaning the people watching. So, I just wanted to say something about that, if that's appropriate.
Oh, you certainly can, yes. It's, right now, it's good, as you know, it's correspondence received, so it'll just get referred on. It's not a night of discussion tonight, but you certainly keep going, please.
Okay, so, I have only lived in town for 15 years, which is nothing compared to most of the people, especially you folks, and, and so, I was unaware that there's quite a history of problems with fishing line and hooks getting tossed around at Hills Pond from people fishing and ending up in the trees and so on, and hurting waterfowl, but there's been a lot of publicity about it in recent months. I happened to be at a park and rec meeting, I'm going to say in May for some other reason, and this came up, and I hadn't even heard of it before, and they said, oh, well, gosh, should we resurrect the fishing line group? And then, a few weeks later, at the Conservation Commission meeting, they brought up the same thing, oh, should we resurrect the fishing line group? And then, that's what this letter is to you, this board, from the Conservation Commission. So, now, it's already been several months since I first heard this issue raised this time around, and there have been more waterfowl found, bound up in, in fishing line and lost, and, or having to take, be taken to wildlife rehab. And also, I heard that there's a, there's a huge amount of fishing line that's up in the branches of the trees around there, such that the tree warden has had to cut off some of the branches, which can't be good for the tree. So, I've just kind of been wondering why nothing is being done about this so far, and it seems to me it's a fairly urgent situation, so I would just hope that the select board, or whoever's decision it is, to decide to go ahead and do something, possibly put a, an emergency pause on fishing until the fishing line working group or some other group can decide, figure out exactly what's going on and what a longer-term solution might be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Mr. Ruderman.
And then, there's one additional person after that.
Thank you, members of the board. Good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Michael Ruderman, 9 Alton Street, right around the corner from Broadway Plaza Businesses. It's great to have the old Abbott's location now become known as New City Micro Creamery. That's, that's very welcome news. The institution of a, a commercial loading and unloading zone just around the corner at the very end of Alton Street has been a great success. It's used throughout the day by the vendors to the businesses in that block, especially for restaurant deliveries. As, I think, as a sort of outgrowth of that success, the vendors who are sending their trucks over to make the deliveries are coming throughout the entire day. The enforcement of the commercial area, of course, is only, only through the hours of the afternoon that that's open. Sometimes what we get is, like I said, the outgrowth of the success of the commercial zone, sometimes there'll be three or four trucks, all trying to deliver at the same time, long after the period of, of parking enforcement has sort of, sort of come to a conclusion for the day. My request is to spread around some of the attention, which has been, you know, welcome, well-received, to enforcing the use of that area at the foot of Alton Street as a commercial zone, and if you could, spread some of that enforcement, parking enforcement, to the hours later in the day, when the overflow vehicles, sometimes three or four at a time, are backing up onto Alton and Belton and making their deliveries right there in the middle of the street. That's the request. Happy to have that empty spot in the commercial block filled. Looking forward to Micro City Creamery, and please continue the parking enforcement eye to the rest of the afternoon that the vendors are delivering in that area. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I go to the next person on Zoom, we have someone here in the chambers. If you could come up and just name an address for the record?
Hi, I'm Karen Grossman. I'm the president of the Phrensis Spy Pond Park. You may know me. I just wanted to comment on what Susan Stamps was talking about with the fishing line. Hills Pond is not the only place where that is a problem. We have a major problem in Spy Pond Park along the shoreline. Every single workday, we go down there once a month, there are lots of fishing lines tangled in the branches, especially near the little step-down steps, and lots of trees where birds are active, and so, I encourage the select board to encourage the appropriate decisions that need to be made in regards to this, because it is a major problem. We have somebody who is going and collecting the lines. We either need a place where the lines can be put in secure locations when they are discarding their lines, boxes or whatever, or certain areas should be prohibited for fishing, because they're not appropriate there, because the line gets caught in the trees. There need to be established safe places where people can fish, and of course, there are even lines out on the pond floating around out there, because there are fishermen out there. So, there needs to be a general policy about fishing that may not pertain particularly to the parks, but to the pond. So, you know, I'm just bouncing off what Susan said to emphasize that issue. Thank you.
We have one more, Asher?
Yep, Susan Chatnick, and she should be here now.
Oh, there you are.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'll be very brief, because I'm supporting what Susan Stamps said, and Karen Grossman. I'm the, Susan Chatnick, I'm the vice chair of the Conservation Commission in our town. We sent a letter that's in your packet to the, to the select board, and unfortunately, we also sent a zip file that contains a lot more documentation, photographs and documentation of the harm and the damage that these fishing lines and lures are causing, especially at Hills Pond. That didn't get in your packet. So, what I'm requesting for the Conservation Commission is your support in considering the prohibition of fishing, at least through the end of this year or the next season, until we can come up with a solution. The Conservation Commission is mandated by the state to protect wildlife habitat. We're also responsible to the town of Arlington, in the town bylaw, to not only protect wildlife habitat, but to protect the wildlife itself, and we cannot do that in this small pond at Hills, Hills Pond in Monotomy Rocks Park because of the fishing line issues. It is critical. It's, it's, it's become an urgent issue. There have been deaths, there have been maiming, and even though the town has tried to alleviate this by doing some pruning, several days after the pruning, and we have pictures, there are still lines and bobbers and hooks that are caught. So, this is an urgent matter that we would request the select board to take up as an agenda item, and we would be happy to represent the Conservation Commission's concerns for this urgent issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That's Ms. Trump. Thank you. Okay, Citizens Open Forum is closed. We'll now go to, and I see another person, but I know who she is, so, but if Dr. Polk joins us by Zoom or enters the chambers, we'll go back to that appointment, but I'm going to continue on in the agenda and go to agenda item 20, discussion and approval planting of Monoc Friendly Pollinator Curbside Gardens by Dr. Elaine Crowder. And I want to thank you for being so patient with me. I know you were ready to have this on the agenda in June, and we had some internal staff that I guess needed to weigh in and may still be weighing in, but we're here tonight because just about all, I think all of my colleagues have mentioned this program and wanting to take the next step. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate being able to present this sort of next step.
I really appreciate being able to present this sort of next step in the monarch initiative in town. I wanted to start with the next slide because who knew that Arlington has a biodiversity horse? I saw this horse and I jumped out of my car and I took the picture. It's a perfect, perfect way to kind of introduce all of the themes that this kind of initiative can start and grow. So I'll leave you with that. Biodiversity, of course, helps life in our open space to thrive and adapt. So what are the elements of curbside gardens? The overall arching element is that there are invitations. The town, in essence, invites residents to adopt a curbside planting strip or bump out near them. This is a direct action for the monarch initiative. It's one that the town has selected as a goal. And so I'm presenting today, tonight, the idea that we can start with several sites and test the waters in how this would work. The residents then, no, go ahead. We're still on this. Sorry. Will then grow native plants or purchase them and prepare the strip, make sure that the weeds are gone. There are different ways to do that. And then plant the strip and water it. I just want to bring your attention to the resource at the bottom, which is from the Watertown Community Gardens. If you haven't had a chance to look at it, it's a very nice guide to creating a roadside pollinator garden. Next slide. So there are several key elements for creating these curbside gardens that we need to communicate as a town to residents. And I have spoken with Bill Cuthbert and discussed some of these sort of constraints that there would be on residents' ability to plant. And one would be the size of the plants. So we have three-foot suggestion from him as the top height and smaller to maintain those sightlines. I spelled sight wrong there. And then, of course, safety things like calling DigSafe, maintaining clearance around the infrastructure that might be in a particular roadside strip, like hydrants and utility access points. Maintaining adequate spacing around trees so that we don't have competition with the immediate area of the tree roots. And also, making it clear to residents that the town rights of way repairs take precedence, that there is the risk that if these repairs need to be done, that the garden might need to be redone. So again, there's a very, on the next slide, yes, the next slide at the bottom of the page. No, sorry. On this next, there's a planting strip guide from the VPW Department in Watertown, which outlines some of these restraints and constraints. So this is an example of several gardens, one of which is in Arlington, the BioSwale on Milton Street. It's looking pretty good at this time. It's got about four flowers and four grasses. Only one of the flowers did not make it there. This is one that is being actively maintained by a neighbor, although I don't know who that is exactly. Haven't had a chance to speak with them. And then a couple of other examples. I was in Montreal recently and they had multiple BioSwales in their, along their streets. And an example of a Watertown curbside garden, which I think this might be a bump out, considered a bump out as opposed to a strip that has been nicely planted, just to give you some idea of what it can look like. Next slide. And of course, there would be some education involved with this. So we would want to make sure that there are ideas presented by the town to residents about how to go about this. Watertown has created a nice planting guide, which is what this is taken from. In this, they included not only the constrictions, restrictions on planting, but also had a very nice guide with suggested plants and ways of planting. So it was, I thought, a good example of something that Arlington might consider. And then also signage that will inform the neighborhood about these plots, letting people know that they're a native garden and that the reason that they are there, that they are improving Arlington's ecosystem and helping conserve monarch butterflies in the process. Next slide. So benefits to the town. Our biodiversity horse has at its heart monarch. So there's the monarch pledge goals right there in the center. The native plants are the legs of this initiative. They're what, you can see them all on the legs of the horse. And they're what's sort of driving the ecosystem, making it possible for pollinators to survive and everything else that lives off of those varying levels of plants, animals, and et cetera. So also, in this photo, it's wonderful that we have an example of the environmental justice neighborhood. So in this initiative includes opportunities for people in neighborhoods that are renters, that may not have their own space, own yard, to be able to participate in gardening. And then finally, it helps to ready the grant, the town to apply for grants. And if we turn the next slide, some of the, I wanted to focus in particular here on the aspect of connected ribbons of green space that we would be developing, especially with these small strips. Arlington does not have much connection, connected open space. It's sort of in little pockets. And what's nice about this kind of image for Arlington is that we can build our green space sort of one street at a time by connecting these native pollinator gardens all over town. That's important because something as simple as the little tiny native bees can't fly far, so they need to be able to have the next flower fairly close. And so that's what that is supporting. And finally, if we go to the last page, no, to the last slide, and then I want to come back if you don't mind. So readiness for grants, the last slide. This just shows that what part of what we'd be doing, we're participating in a much larger initiative that is both a state initiative, biodiversity initiative in the state, and also at the UN level, where there's encouragement that biodiversity be thought of in decision-making at every level. And that 30%, the targets that the UN has are that 30% of all degraded ecosystems be restored and to reduce introduction of invasive species by 50%. So this initiative would help with both of those. Now, if we can go back to proposed sites. And I want to ask whether Bill Fishelis is online? He, okay.
Not seen.
Thought he might be able to make it, but I. So the proposed sites for this are First Eastern Ave, Curbside Strip, which is adjacent to Robbins Farm Park. If you look in the bottom map there on the next slide.
Sorry, it's stuck. There you go.
Yeah. He's proposing to start at the top of the hill where the green circle is along the curbside strip. And then would see this perhaps expanding with, over time, to go down further along Eastern Ave. And he sees this as something that would not only engage neighbors in care, but also in planting and care, but also the elementary school that is in the area with that initiative. So Bill is a member of the Board of Friends of Robbins Farm Park and as such is able to sort of leverage that community to get support for care for this. He has previously engaged neighbors in watering park trees. And he's also a science teacher. So he's interested in all of those aspects of growing knowledge about biodiversity in town. And again, going back one more. Yes, so the two other sites. One is the Pocket Park that you are already familiar with on Zero Landcaster. We came before you last year to ask to be able to remove, especially black swallowwort, but other invasives that are in that site. It's a very nice site because it has already a lot of nice natives in it, native trees. There's oak. There is, there's just a lot of nice things already there. And we would be hoping at this site, not so much to do a garden-garden, but something that's more along the lines of ecological restoration, paying attention to what is there already and bringing things like purple lovegrass, thicket creeper that is often in the, already in Arlington woodlands and does a nice job of making it through drought, et cetera. So that is a second site that we would like to include in this. And then the third would be a residential curbside strip with a volunteer resident who would like to develop their curbside strip. So that is our proposal, and I'm open for questions.
Thank you. Mr. Helman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. I like this idea a lot. What specifically, what decisions specifically are you seeking from the board tonight? And this might be a question for the town manager as well as a proponent. Because is there a jurisdictional issue here? Are these public rights of way? You know, are you just looking for support? Do we need to specifically authorize anything? I'm just trying to get some specificity about what you're seeking, other than the information.
Seeking permission to be able to do this on the properties that the Select Board manages, which would be the...
Yeah, thank you. I think if the Chair agrees, I'd like to ask the town manager maybe to eliminate us on the issue of control of the sites.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Helman. Also happy to have Attorney Cunningham weigh in if he would like. But my understanding, yes, is that there are three proposed sites. And that strip is likely under the jurisdiction of this board. So for the town-owned property, this board would need to provide for approval. With regard to the larger program in terms of encouraging residents to, you know, plant in those areas, I'm not sure that there's a specific vote required of this board because it's not for a specific parcel. But I think what Dr. Crowder is seeking is the board's vote of approval or authorization. And that's something I would appreciate as well if we were going to encourage this further across town.
Yeah, thank you. And which side of Eastern Avenue is the proposal? Is it the park side or the school side?
Park side.
Attorney Cunningham, did you have anything to add to that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with the manager and I think Mr. Helman's question is a good one in that wherever this project is going to take place on public rights of way, that would require specific approval by the board. To the extent that there's a desire for larger approval of the concept of this from the board, that's a different matter. But the portions that are impacting public ways are specifically within the board's jurisdiction and would require this board's authorization.
Thank you. That's very helpful. I appreciate that. And I love this. I think it's a really, really nice idea for all the reasons that you said, so I won't repeat them. Thank you, Madam Chair. That is a motion. I don't want to hog the motions tonight, but I do really like it.
That's okay. I like writing E H.
I think the town manager has a...
Mr. Feeney?
I just wanted to add one technical element for the board's consideration. And I apologize for bringing this to your attention late. But in the materials provided, it called for a recommendation of three feet. And perhaps that had come through engineering. My recommendation would actually be two and a half feet. And that would be consistent with the section of our zoning bylaw entitled Visibility for Driveways, which permits vegetation only to a height of two and a half feet within five feet of the front lot line. So I would think, so as to not be incongruent with that requirement, that if you were extending the requirement out to the right-of-way, that we keep that height requirement consistent.
Happy to make that part of my motion. And I think, generally speaking, my assumption on this is that the town manager would have a role in the actual implementation of these, you know, with the health and safety and engineering constraints that, that and others that you would have.
Thank you, Mr. Helman. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I'm happy to second this. I mean, and I'm glad to see a program like this. Just a couple of questions. I mean, so who's going to create the guide?
We have a model for the guide. We could use, we could see if we could use exactly that guide.
But who's going to, is it going to be town staff or you and volunteers or?
If it's coming from the town, I would prefer that it be the town staff. But I suppose I could do it.
Well, so then my question goes to Mr. Feeney. I mean, is this something that we have the capacity to do?
Thank you, Mr. Diggins, for the question. This is not something I have directly discussed with staff in terms of where this may fit in as a priority or the level of effort required. But I would be happy to discuss this with the appropriate staff. And as Dr. Crowder noted, when we have a template or a model, I'm sure we could get permission from our colleagues in a neighboring community to potentially use that as a base for what we do here locally.
Because, I mean, that's kind of the tension, you know. Because I'm so much for civic engagement. This is a form of it. I think it's one of the best forms of it, you know. And but then there comes like this resource issue. I mean, it's like, to a certain extent, residents don't have all the resources they need to accomplish a goal like this. But then, I mean, it's not like the staff is sitting around with extra time on their hands. I mean, and so I think sometimes it becomes a timing issue. So you can bring a proposal to us. But then with respect to the implementation, it may have to be, you know, delayed for a while as we gather the resources to do it. So even though the time may not be allocated this year, you know, it could be allocated next year. I just put that out there so that if you don't get the momentum on this really soon because staff doesn't have the bandwidth, then just allow us time to get that bandwidth. Alternatively, you can have a set of volunteers that can do the work and do some coordination, you know, with the town staff so that it has kind of, has enough of the imprimatur of the town to be effective. So that's it. And just a couple of suggestions. I mean, another question, actually. Have you done any work with sustainable, excuse me. Have you done any work with sustainable? Have you done any work with Sustainable Arlington?
Sorry, I can't hear you well behind the mask.
I'm sorry. Have you done any work with Sustainable Arlington?
Yes, I have.
Okay, great.
Can I just say also that the brochure is not the central piece of this and that it's more the, you know, getting permission to do some planting, and those brochures are something that's going to be explaining what the planting is about when it happens.
Gotcha. Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? If not, on a motion by Mr. Helman, amended to the two and a half feet in accordance with our bylaws, seconded by Mr. Diggins, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Welcome back. I've been sending or forwarding emails of people making Monarch butterfly sightings, so...
I have one thing that I don't know whether I want to, can I speak with you a second?
Not right now. Not right now, no.
Just a second? Well, no.
No, after this, we're in a meeting right now, so we have to continue on with the business. So, thank you. I'm going to take Agenda Item 23 out of order. Originally, when I put this on, I hadn't clarified if someone besides myself would be speaking on this. Thankfully, someone besides myself will be speaking on this. This has come to the board's attention, and from what I understand, and I'll leave it to, if I could invite David Stoff and Kristin Anderson up to the table, I believe this is the first of three or four developments in the Alewife area, sort of the nexus that butts Arlington. There is a comment period that's open. There is reference material concerning points that the board may want to consider. And what I'm hoping is after this is that we, if amenable to, that the board take a motion to receive the information regarding a possible comment letter on the MEPA filing, but refer to the town manager and through him to the Board of Health and anyone else that the town manager thinks is appropriate to look at a possible submission, to submit in time by September 10th on the MEPA. And then this would be the framework for the upcoming two or three projects that also will affect Arlington. But I'll turn it over to whoever wants to go first.
Hi, I'm David Stoff. I live in Arlington, Fairmont Street, and I'm here to speak about the Health Peak ENF, which is a large mixed-use development project in Cambridge. And actually, it's a pleasure to be here and see you all in person and sit in the chamber. I enjoy that. And in a lot of ways, this Health Peak development is a really good thing. It's a very well-planned development, and it's the result of a lot of input from the Cambridge community, years of trying to rezone this area of the Alewife. And I really respect the work that has gone into that. Along with that work comes a lot of assumptions that Cambridge planning brings to the project. And one of those assumptions has always been that some of the impacts of their projects, the detrimental impacts, traffic, wastewater, they can be passed on to other towns. Belmont received a copy of the ENF because it's, the plan will dump a lot of traffic directly on the Concord Ave. And I assume that they will have something to say. Arlington should really have received a copy of this ENF because we're impacted by the wastewater from the project, we're impacted by the traffic, and the project correctly identifies environmental justice neighborhoods in Arlington, and these are impacted. And because of changes in Massachusetts law, these kinds of impacts have to be analyzed in the environmental review process. So what I'd like to see the town do is be an active participant in this process, send a great letter that uses a lot of the town's expertise, particularly the traffic, which I have nothing to say about because I know nothing about it. It's a specialty area, and we have the specialists and the health impacts. I have been back and forth with the Massachusetts Department of Public Health to try and get their environmental justice health impact tool to correctly identify some of the health impacts in our area. And principally, when you look at this ENF, you'll notice that they did not identify two combined sewer overflow outfalls at the border of the project that discharged 24 million gallons of untreated sewage. So it's a health impact that has to be analyzed, and it's on us, on this town, to see that the MEPA office correctly gets the information and has it to analyze because ultimately, they will make their own decision. But unless we are participants and we provide our point of view, it's just going to, these impacts will be ignored. So, I appreciate, you know, like I say, I appreciate being here, and I look forward to some kind of action coming from the board to deal with this problem. Because as Diane said, this is the first of multiple projects in the area. It's a very large project, but there's a stream of them coming, and I think with each one of them, we will refine our expertise and be better able to advocate for the citizens of the town.
I wanted to thank the board also for putting this on the agenda, and I'm especially grateful to Chair Diane Mahan for her concern, ongoing concern. So, thank you. My name is Kristin Anderson. I'm a town meeting member and a founding member of Save the Alewife Brook. I'm here this evening with two other founding members of Save the Alewife Brook, one of whom is David Stoff, and another is David White, who I think is somewhere on the internet watching. Save the Alewife Brook is a grassroots environmental community health advocacy group with thousands of supporters mostly in Cambridge and Somerville. Save the Alewife Brook advocates for an end to untreated sewage pollution and flooding problems associated with Alewife Brook. And I'm here today because I have had Alewife Brook floodwater in my home. Sewage-contaminated floodwater came through the back door of my house and left behind toilet paper, used condoms and used tampons. Afterwards, my neighbors and I became sick with painful digestive problems and bloody diarrhea. In 2023, 30 million gallons of raw sewage from Cambridge and Somerville was dumped into Alewife Brook from MWRA's sewer system. The Brook flooded five times that year, sending sewage into the Alewife Greenway path. We saw joggers running through untreated sewage, children on bicycles riding through it, and parents pushing baby strollers through untreated sewage floodwater. The situation is horrific. And now regarding the Health Peak development in the Cambridge quadrangle, that project looks amazing. We need the housing and the amenities that will be built into that area through this project. However, the consultants failed to identify two combined sewer overflow outfalls located 1,000 feet from their project. In 2023, those two CSOs discharged 23 million gallons of raw sewage into Alewife Brook, accounting for 76% of the total Alewife Brook sewage pollution that year. The Health Peak project will add nearly three-quarters of a million gallons of sewage per day, which is 260 million gallons annually. This project will add all of that sewage to the MWRA interceptor, which is one of two major sewer lines in the Alewife. That major sewer line, known as the interceptor, is designed to overflow and send untreated sewage into Alewife Brook. And for comparison, Arlington adds about 4.3 million gallons of sewage per day to the MWRA system at 327 connections. The Health Peak project would add 16% of the daily flow of the entire town of Arlington, at the point where the interceptor is designed to overflow and send untreated sewage into Alewife Brook. About 1.7 million gallons per day of Arlington's daily flow is inflow and infiltration, which is water that leaks into the town sewers. Arlington is required to limit its inflow and infiltration contribution to the MWRA system. The wastewater flow of the Health Peak project is about 42% of Arlington's total inflow and infiltration contribution to the MWRA system. So in simple terms, Arlington could spend a fortune on removing this water leaking into its pipes, and this one project, which is being proposed by Health Peak, would negate almost half of it. While this project is really exciting, it really requires CSO mitigation. So we have two asks tonight, which Diane has already identified. We ask that the Select Board provide a formal written comment on the Health Peak environmental notification form, and we ask for a meeting with Arlington's Board of Health to discuss additional information that it would need to determine what CSO, to determine that CSOs are a source of illness in our community. Thank you.
And I have had a conversation with the town manager on this particular filing with Health Peak. And we, right now, as has been noted, have not been notified, so really haven't had the opportunity to really look into it, and especially from the health aspect, the board health aspect of it. So what I'm hoping that is, we have a framework of a letter that was sent to us and reference materials that outlines the wastewater, the traffic, and the environmental justice. A possible comment letter, whether it comes from the Select Board or from the town manager. So I'm hoping that we could move receipt of that and then refer to the town manager, and I certainly would be willing to work on it and make sure that... What I want to do is to have a filing with MEPA that goes in before September 10th. But I also anticipate on the next two or three projects that come down the line, this would be, as I said before, a framework for Arlington to not so much comment on the project or the appropriateness, because, you know, just taking Health Peak on its own, this is a very good project and is in line with a lot of things that Arlington wants to do and Cambridge wants to do. But we do need to speak with a consistent voice, you know, especially around the traffic impacts to environmental justice communities, East Arlington and wastewater. So with that, I would turn to my colleagues for any questions. Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Anderson and Mr. Stoff for the presentation tonight. And I just want to clarify the date for the comment, it's September 30th, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Oh, I said...
All right. Yeah, yeah, no, I just, it gives us a little bit more time. I mean, I think as a board, I am vaguely familiar with what is being proposed there in the Fawcett Street area, and it does look like a solid project, but your concerns are valid concerns. I, I'd like to maybe educate ourselves a little bit more leading up to a letter, maybe express an intent to write something, but until we have a draft and a little bit more feedback, I don't know exactly what we're going to say yet. So that's why I certainly would be supportive of sending something in and certainly supportive of asking for a meeting with the Board of Health. So I'd like to make a motion to at least move forward to a, to a letter-writing stage, and maybe we come back in our first meeting in September with a little bit more discussion at that point. And then would also support encouraging a meeting with the Board of Health.
Thank you, Mr. De Corsi.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hurd. Any further questions or comments? Thank you. As the first part of the step going forward, I will work with the town manager, Ms. Anderson and Mr. Stoff moving forward, and we'll have something in draft form for our first meeting, as Mr. De Corsi points out, in September, where we'll have a more in-depth discussion. So if there are no further questions and comments, I know a motion by Mr. De Corsi, seconded by Mr. Hurd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Now go to...
Good seeing you.
Good to see you, and thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
We also got the benefit of our environmental planner who got to listen to that discussion, so we're a little ahead of ourselves on that. Agenda Item 21, David Morgan, Discussion and Approval Proposal to Install Cooling Structures in Public Ways.
Good evening. David Morgan, environmental planner. We're going to start with a project called Wicked Cool Arlington, excuse me. And I want to focus in on the second slide briefly because this is a map, the data on which you may not be particularly familiar with. The reddest parts of this map show where the hottest parts of Arlington are. On any given day, these will be several degrees hotter than other parts of town, and in extreme heat days, they can be 10, 15 degrees hotter than the surrounding areas. It poses threat to public health, and it is certainly driving up energy costs in those areas, largely owes to the condition of the built environment, lots of dense buildings, black roofs that absorb heat, pavement, et cetera. You'll notice that the lighter areas on the map where you see cooler spots are parks, places in town where there are larger lot sizes, meaning more green and open space. And I'll also point out that this is only done within the Mystic River watershed, so the part of town that's excluded is in the Charles River watershed off to the east there. Next slide. The Mystic River Watershed Association has helped us identify these areas and worked on solutions for cooling the hotter parts of town for numerous years. We've been at this since 2021. We started with Wicked Hot Mystic. It's a regional collaboration, given the watershed approach, largely funded by the state's municipal vulnerability preparedness program. And we joined on to several rounds. I think it's three, maybe four grants at this point, where in the, in the first instance, the Wicked Hot Mystic, we modeled the watershed and came up with the data I showed you on the previous slide. Now we're into Wicked Cool Mystic. Since 2023, we've been working on that. And that latest round involved hiring social scientists, landscape architects, having paid ambassadors who went out and collected data for us in the various municipalities, community engagement, et cetera. And our findings in Arlington in particular were that, A, folks are cognizant of extreme heat issues. They are concerned about them. They are rather clever about the observations that they have. They know where these hotter parts of town are and that we need interventions to cool those particular areas. They're especially keen on more trees and public shade structures, hence the direction that we've taken. This last round of grant funding earmarked $100,000 per community for implementation of shade structures, and I can show you a little bit about what we propose to put those, that money towards in a moment. We were just having a conversation about environmental justice communities. You know, of course, the topic is important in this context as well. The particular intervention that we've focused on is designed to meet the needs of EJ communities, those bus riders who are coming and going to and from Arlington, working here, living in a different community, or vice versa. And the places that we focused are on high ridership areas, high ridership lines, and the stops on those within Arlington that are particularly high-traffic. So we had several considerations. I mean, we looked in the Heights, we looked in East Arlington, the Center, we pretty much spanned the gamut, but we advanced two in the end. And the first is Mass Ave and Broadway, Broadway Plaza, newly redone. And the concept here would be to augment that redesign with some additional cooling structures. So the three planting structures that you see closest to Mass Ave, those squares, I guess they sort of look more like diamonds the way they're oriented, would be perched on top of the existing planters. There'd be an arbor on the side for trailing vines and whatnot to help with the shading during the growing seasons. And they're also sort of capped, so you can get a bit of shade depending on the aspect of the sun. This being south-facing, there's quite a lot of it to be had, so that would do a good amount of shading. There's also a shade sail proposed, and that's the rectangular shape, excuse me, in the top left. top left. That is surface mounted, so it would basically be brackets attached to the concrete that's poured there. That would make it a movable structure if we wanted to detach from those mounts in the future and repurpose it in another location. That's possible to do. The other location is at Broadway and Tufts. If you're familiar with the laundromat that's right there, it's right across the street. There is a building that I don't believe is in use. I, I'm not certain about that, but I haven't seen anybody using it for quite some time. This is just down from the bus stop that is at the end of that building. And I should point out, although I'm sure you're familiar, the Broadway Plaza stop services a couple of different bus stops within proximity, so hence the priority. Back to this one, what's proposed here is a pergola, so there are sort of stanchions that would support a flat-roofed structure. This would be stable, installed permanently on a reinforced concrete pad. There is sufficient passage for ADA purposes, also just, you know, pedestrian use, what have you. There's also the opportunity to put in a bench underneath this, just as a resting area. This is, as I say, just down the way from a bus stop, so we're not having to interact with the clearance aisle for the MBTA loading sites and so forth, but it would still provide that sort of resting place as you're waiting for the bus, or, you know, you're looking for shelter from the heat, the elements, what have you, and then you can get up and go get your bus. What we need at this stage is more than a couple of things, I'd say. First, you know, your, your approval to move forward with this, just like the prior conversation, we were talking about this occurring in the right-of-way, which is within your jurisdiction. We also need to make some decisions about which of these projects that we prioritize. I mentioned upfront, we have $100,000 to expend on these implementations. The estimates given are $86,000 for the Broadway Plaza site, and then $63,000 for Broadway and Tufts. We can get as granular, as granular as you would like, but I think the, the crux of the matter is the, those shade structures in the planters, rather inexpensive, the larger structure at Broadway Plaza would be the bulk of the cost reflected here. And then naturally, the $63,000 at Broadway and Tufts is really mostly for that structure, there's a small amount set aside for a bench. So the question ultimately is, do you have a preference about which one we pursue? And, well, I guess that presupposes that you, you prefer that we pursue either, so that's really the first question. I'll leave it there.
Okay. Mr. De Corsi?
Oh, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank, thank you, Mr. Morgan, for the presentation. And, and I, I like the concept of the program. I, I have to say, I have concerns about both locations, and Broadway Plaza, because the bus stop isn't right there. If we're tying this into a bus, or, or to people waiting for a bus, you know, unless there's a thought about moving the bus stop, I don't think there is. I don't think the T would be receptive to that. They want to be in front of the old Pupiginos. It, it doesn't tie in very nicely for me there. Broadway, that's three stops from the end of the 87 line, and so I don't see that as a location that people are going to be waiting for a bus. Now, if this is something that we're talking about, okay, let's put a shade structure in because we want to put shade structure in, that's, that's different. I just, I just don't see it being used that often. So I like the concept, I like the ideas. I'm just wondering, you, you said you considered a number of different locations, and I see on the heat map, the intersection of Mass Ave and Winter Street is probably one of the hottest spaces in town. There's also a bus stop there that probably was discarded for other reasons, maybe it's too narrow, but that to me is, it, it's a rather high ridership bus stop.
Yep.
And it's on the side of Mass Ave that gets a lot of sun. I'm just wondering if there are any other locations, because I, I know it's a grant, but I, I, I see flaws in both locations that give me some concerns.
Valid points across the board. I live at five Winter Street now, so I'm very familiar with that bus stop and the amount of heat that that site gets. One of the reasons that we excluded that one in particular is because MBTA has some funding to put toward up to five bus stops shelters.
Okay.
That we, and I've been working with our transportation planner, and not to put my finger too heavily on the scale, but I did say that one in particular is very high ridership, and I can see people out there sweltering. So I would say that that's a priority, totally agree. Similar considerations up in the Heights, for example, we were looking at the amount of space available, especially like the Park Ave, Mass Ave intersection there. You know, a lot of the ones that we would consider and that would be higher ridership would be going inbound from the terminus there, and there really is limited space, and there's shade from the buildings in those locations. So unless you're going to the opposite side, and then you're running the same problem as you described on Broadway, of being close to the end of the line, and it's not that effective necessarily as a, as a shade structure. So we also looked in the center, right in front of the buildings on the corner of Mystic and Mass, right? That's the northern side of the street. I'm forgetting. And we, we're concerned there about doing too much. It would be almost a city block length of shade structure there. I mean, that, that's a good amount of space right in front of those buildings that you would have for the bus shelter itself, and then to offset that and put it adjacent to that, you'd wind up taking a good amount of space. There are proposals for street trees there, there's sidewalk work to be done in the future, et cetera, so discounted that one. So we came up with the, the best of both worlds, excluding some of the ones that we had previously considered, kept our priorities in the order I described them, and identified these sites as sort of second best, frankly.
Then, thank you. Yeah, I, my concerns are still out there, but I appreciate the elaborating on the, on the, on the Winter Street and, and your other considerations.
Mr. Diggins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I have to say, I, I, if I was going to pick, I would pick the Broadway location. I mean, I understand the concerns about, you know, the link is to the bus, but it, it's close enough, and, and if you are waiting for the, the, the bus to be at this terminus, you know, it's close enough. And, and I think it adds me some shade to that plaza, and since we did have to remove trees in order to redo the plaza, and it's going to take a while for the trees to grow and be really, you know, producing a lot of shade, I think it, it will give, give more shade, you know, and, and I think it'll kind of give an extra, it'll be an interesting structure, too, you know what I mean? So I was actually wondering if the MBTA was going to do more or, or create more structures, me, the, what do you call it for the bus stops, me, but anyways, covered structures for the bus stops, so it's good to see, you know, that, that they're doing that, you know, and, and so, yeah. So I, yeah, I mean, I'm very excited about the notion of doing something at Broadway, so, so we, I'd like to hear from my colleagues, maybe before, maybe, maybe proposing something, a motion, but I'm inclined to support that.
Mr. Helms.
Question. So do we, are we picking one or the other, or approving, potentially approving both? What do you need?
I'm happy to take your input on which one you prefer and the guidance about which way to move forward. I'm also happy to make that decision in concert with the folks involved in the project and our transportation planner, et cetera. But if you have thoughts to that, then I'm very happy to hear them.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I'm with Mr. Diggins. I think I would, I have a preference for the Broadway location. I think that it's exactly the same reasons that he said, that, that would, that would meet another need, other needs there as well as, I think, being close enough for transit. That'd be my, that'd be my take.
Mr. Hurd.
I'd say of the two locations, I'd prefer Broadway, too, and I understand it's supposed to be proximate to bus stops, but at least at the Broadway location, there'd be other uses for it, you know, you walk through Broadway Plaza all the time, and it does get hot and bright, so, you know, anyone can, can use the structure in order to get a little relief. So I think that's the, where we get the most bang for our buck, even though it's a little more expensive. The only thing to mention, and I guess Tom also can correct me, but in the Broadway Plaza area, could we request parking benefits money to go towards a structure there to supplement the deficit that we have in putting both in? That pushes it out a little bit, but.
Mr. Feeney?
Happy to weigh in. Thank you, Mr. Hurd. In my opinion, that is something that would be a permissible use of parking benefit district funds. Of course, it would have to wait and be programmed for the following fiscal year.
Yeah, well, I was just saying, because of the two locations, one of them has a unavailable funding source. Now, it's, as being on the committee, that's a pretty big request, but we have had requests of that of similar size for the parking benefits district.
Marjorie Cunningham?
Thank you, and just in response to Mr. Hurd's question, yes, in my opinion, that would be a permissible use of those funds.
Not too complicated, but, because I prefer the Broadway one, I'm just saying, if we, if the goal was to try to get both without having to find additional funds.
One, Mr. De Corsi?
Yeah, I, and, and I, I understand my colleague's comments that it's close enough. I mean, I would agree, it provides shade in Broadway Plaza, so in that respect, I could support it. I, I, and, and I, I think if we're talking about $100,000, I mean, just remember, this, this other recommendation, I, I don't know how much study was done. I, I, I can't imagine many people at all who are waiting for a bus at that stop, because again, it's, it's right, you're, you're three blocks from the end of the 87 bus, and, and it's, it's, you know, there might be people getting off, but I mean, I, I think, you know, maybe the parking benefits district funds are better used for, for other things. If we're going to allocate $100,000, it seems to me it should just be for Broadway, and I, I can get over, I, I don't think it's close enough, but I think it provides shades, so on that basis, I could, I could go along with it.
Mr. Diggins.
Thank you. Well, actually, I, I, I do not care for the Tufts and Broadway location, partly because it's, I mean, I walk down Broadway a lot, me, in the summertime, me, it never occurs to me to, like, just stop there, you know, to, to get a great, but then I'll say, you know, I'm from New Orleans and I like the heat, you know, so, so then maybe I just have a higher tolerance, me, for, for, for the weather, you know, but, yeah, I mean, and, and I, I would just like to support more of the T, you know, building shelters, me, for, for the patrons who use the, the buses, me, that should just be system-wide, me, because it's not only for the heat, but it's also for, for the rain and, and also the wind when it gets, it gets some cold. Quick question that may be out of scope, you know, and so everyone can check me on this. With respect to the heat effect, me, you mentioned like black roofs, you know, me, are there any thoughts or plans or considerations for, for painting roofs, me, white, to try to mitigate this effect on a, on a bigger scale? If it's out of scope.
I'm happy to answer, but we don't have funding or programming designed to accomplish that goal yet. It's a thing that I recognize is part of the consideration of reducing heat island effects writ large, and something that I would like to pursue in the future. Within this scope, the project scope, I mean, we have money for reflective paint on asphalt, which would, it'd just be a lighter color, and that would be the thing we use to reduce heat. I'll likely be back before you'd ask questions about that aspect of the project, but for now, it's just the structures.
Well, thanks, because I realized when I asked the question, that was a question I really wanted to ask. So, so, so good, all right.
Great. Did anyone make a motion?
I'm, I'm the chair, so I'm just waiting to, Mr. Diggins.
Okay, thank you. So, so I, I will make a motion that we go forward with the shelter in our, whatever it is, the shelter at Broadway, Mass Ave and Broadway.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Hurd. Thank you, Mr. Helms, for not making that motion. We're going to give you a rest. Any further?
They're restraining him over here.
Any further questions or comments? If not, on a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous vote. We'll go to agenda item 22, Pond Lane, and then we'll go back after that to appointment to the Clean Energy Future Committee, because I believe Mr. Helms has brought to my attention that Dr. Polk is online on Zoom. So we'll go to agenda item 22, and then we'll go back to agenda item 17. So 22, Discussion and Approval Open Space Concepts for 21 Pond Lane. Mr. Morgan.
Thank you very much. Again, David Morgan, Environmental Planner. This location at 21 Pond Lane has, actually, let's take a look at the, the title screen there to orient folks. Proximity to Spy Pond, it is just off-screen to the south, that's the Minuteman Bike Way at the very bottom part of the screen. Pond Lane is to the north and east along that diagonal stretch, and then Avon Place is to the west along the sort of even side. There are paths, informal paths, coming from the bike way, you can sort of see a gap in the trees there, into the space. There's also an informal path through an easement that the town holds to Avon Place, that was a paper street once upon a time, and then there is an entrance to the site at the northeast corner, let's call it northeast, from Pond Lane. It's about a half an acre large, and the second slide here shows a view of the interior of the space. So the first picture is that informal access from the bike path that I described. The second one is the formal entrance from Pond Lane, and then farthest to the right, the topmost is looking westward towards Avon Place. The second one in the middle there is looking into the space from the Pond Lane entrance, and then the bottommost on the right-hand side is looking toward the formal entrance from the informal entrance from the bike way corner, so it's going from southwest to northeast. The town acquired this property with CDBG funds back in 1977. It has something of a storied history over the decades that have passed. I believe the structure, it was a two-family home and barn, I believe it burned down at one point in the late 70s, and the barn was ultimately demolished in 79. It's really sat as an empty lot since then. There have been proposals over the years for its redevelopment in a number of different ways, everything from housing to a parking lot to sort of a rotary for access to Spy Pond. All times, things have been brought forward, they have failed, hopefully this is the exception to the rule. As I say, it's, it's, we, we know that open space is at a premium in Arlington. It is very, very hard to find additional space in town where the purpose can be changed, and this is zoned as open space. In fact, the 1992 plan for the renovation of Spy In fact, the nineteen ninety-two plan for the renovation of Spy Pond Park included this lot as a native shrub garden. There was a gazebo in there and sort of a circuitous path coming out of either side of Pond Lane with access to Avon Place. In twenty twenty-four, we undertook, we being Department of Planning and Community Development, my office, feasibility study with Home Harvest. Arlington native Ben Barkin, who started Home Harvest, was hired with the fifteen thousand dollar CPA award. He and his firm conducted hundreds of interviews. There was an actual survey that he went out onsite, visitors to Spy Pond Park, neighbors, community members passing through, were all interviewed, and we held two public forums on this topic. And what emerged from that engagement was desire for something distinctive, something unique unlike anything else in Arlington. And ultimately, we settled on the idea of a public garden, very similar to what you heard from Elaine about tonight, focused on promoting biodiversity, native plantings, habitat, et cetera. And as I mentioned, you know, the ninety-two plan initially envisioned this space as very similar to what we're proposing now. Finally, just to underscore the, the engagement was done with low maintenance in mind. Part of our public land management plan highlights the need for a low maintenance approach to the future use of public spaces, given funding, labor constraints, et cetera. So this is what we've come up with. This is a conceptual design that Ben and his firm did, and I can walk you through some of the elements. I'll start at the northernmost part of the site where there's a privacy gate and fence to protect neighbors from any additional traffic, you know, people passing through. The neighbors at that address have a home daycare and they're concerned about having, you know, the children out while a number of passersby were using the park and whatnot. So they, we, we wanted to make sure that they were reassured about, you know, maintaining their privacy. All around would be trees and shrubs, these all native and planted very particularly. There are a number of Norway maples on site, which are very hard to grow under, might require some tree removal in the future. Remains to be seen whether or how that would be done. But the point of replanting would be to do it as densely as possible. This would be in order to keep maintenance costs down, promote natural selection. What grows in will flourish, and what doesn't grow in will be weeds and other things that require high maintenance because of the density of the plantings. There are elements around the pathway, which again, sort of a circular shape. This time proposed to have a sort of less formal pathway as a cut-through because we heard quite frequently that folks use this lot as a way to access the bike path coming down Pond Lane, given that there's, you know, the bridge there to the Spy Pond Park, parking lot and playground and so forth. It's much more difficult to get up and go into town on the bike way through that entrance than it is to come through twenty-one Pond Lane. In the middle there, we're planning a central flower meadow. The idea again would be densely planted, low, low maintenance, you know, mulched out, suppress the weeds, grow in the flowers as densely as we can and allow space for that informal pathway. And there would be use of that unofficial entrance, although we would not encourage it. We are not by design permitting it or saying that this is a formal entrance to the bike way. Neither are we by design prohibiting that use. The entrance to Avon Place could be formalized a bit more, and that would allow for a second entrance regress. And all along, we will have seating options and sort of appropriate treatment of, of the site. So the, the last thing here, permission to proceed. What we're looking at is a roughly nine hundred thousand dollar design to implement. That would include three years of maintenance. That's the establishment period, and that would include some programming, educational components around, you know, the, the site, its history, the plantings that are there, et cetera. This would not come at a capital expense for the town. We're not looking for money in the budget for this purpose, but maybe seeking CPA funding, quite likely other state sources. And I, I mentioned that nine hundred thousand dollar price tag, but there is an antecedent step there that we need to go from design concept all the way through permitting and so forth. So that chunk will be scoped out should we get approval to proceed. I can stop there and take comments and questions.
Thank you. They're looking very pensively. Maybe they're already there. Maybe you don't have to build it. Mr. Hurd?
I mean, I love the design. Unfortunately, we don't have any to give, we don't have that ability. But yeah, I didn't, I drive by this every day, and I didn't even know that was there. So it would be nice to have, you know, a more robust use of the space. And so, and I think what is being put before us is, would do that. And, you know, I, I know, as I do drive by there, it's a pretty, it's a very busy area, you know, with the park there and, you know, people using Spy Pond and coming through the Boys Club and whatnot, Boys and Girls Club. My parents always correct me that. But the, so I think that it certainly could have, you know, with the foot traffic in this area, some pretty good use. So, I mean, I'm happy to move approval of the permission to proceed and good luck with the money.
Thank you.
Go find nine hundred Gs. There you go. Mr. Helmut?
Very happily second that. I, I think that Mr. Morgan mentioned that Ben Barkin is a native of Arlington. He really is, and I've known Ben for probably sixteen, seventeen years. I'm really familiar with his work. It is not an understatement to say that Mr. Barkin is a visionary. And anyone who knows his work around Arlington, the community orchard, the fruit trees at Park Circle, and in many, many private projects around town, including mine, very early on, I was one of his first customers when he was just getting started. But he has a unique talent for understanding public space and community as it interacts with the environment and plantings. And he is, his is a very deeply mission-driven organization. I have to say, reading this report, the town got its money's worth for fifteen thousand dollars. That is one of the most extensive studies and projects I've, I've seen. And I'm really impressed with the community process that went into this. So, yeah, I, I echo Mr. Hurd. I hope that the, the funding does come together for something like this. I think it's a really innovative idea and something potentially really special.
Thank you, Mr. Decorsy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm happy to support this as well, and I appreciate the notes that you provided, Mr. Morgan, on the history of the site because the two locations had independent histories where the crew team has their storage. And years ago, there were ideas there, as, as you mentioned, to provide parking so you could have more open space on the Spy Pond side. It never went anywhere. And this property, town meeting actually gave approval first, and the property was to be used for a public purpose. And it's, I suppose, has open space that no one has used. You could argue whether that's been a public purpose. I'm, I'm glad to, to, to see that there's something here, to have a, a more passive area, and, and it was a very comprehensive study. So I think I'm happy to see this, see you pursue this. I, where, whatever, what happens down the road, who knows? But I, I think we're, we're all happy with what, what's presented here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I mean, I see, I see how we got where we are on this. You know, it's, it's an improvement. It, it, it just doesn't excite me, you know. And it, the sculpture garden did, you know, and, and I think if it were like a sculpture garden that was, had temporary installations, I mean, so that, you know, there would be moments where we all came together, or people who were interested would come and see the new installation. I mean, to me, that would be more of a, create more of a community gathering space, you know, because, because I kind of see peaceful retreat and community gathering space as at odds with each other. I mean, I'd like to just see it more active, I mean, and, and, I mean, the notion of a secret garden, you know, is also something that just kind of like, ugh, you know, it's like, it doesn't really, doesn't, it doesn't feel welcoming to me. It's more like, it's kind of like it's for the neighborhood, you know, but not for, for the community at large. So if you kind of know it's there, you know, then, then you go there. But then, what really draws me in, you know, the arch does. I mean, so when I look at the project, I like the arch a lot, but then I was like, would I go back there? And I think there are people who would, you know, but it wouldn't be me. But if there's a sculpture garden, you know, that I could say, well, you know, every few months or whatever, I mean, there'd be another installation, then, then, then I would go back, you know. So, so I mean, I'm not going to say no, I mean, because it seems like, first off, you've done a lot of work, a lot of good work. I think the feasibility study is well done, with the exception of the fact, I mean, when it comes to the public engagement, it seems like there were only in-person workshops, which to me kind of limits, I mean, the extent to which you do get, get input. And so that makes me wonder, I mean, in town hall, can we do hybrid meetings? I guess that's a direction to.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Are you inquiring us to whether or not we can do hybrid meetings in the auditorium?
Yeah.
We would be able to do so, but only in a very small format, correct, like, to do so correctly with one of the mobile neat boards. So that, that wouldn't effectively serve someone sitting in the back of the auditorium, but in a smaller group setting, we could provide for that.
So I think, well, well, if it's not feasible to do hybrids, I mean, I think it, I mean, there, there needs to be like one, you know, remote meeting, I mean, for people who can't or prefer, you know, not to, to do in person. That increases the chances that you'll get a little more diverse response, I mean, and so, so I'm kind, as you might see, be that I'm, I'm leaning, you know, towards a possible campaign slogan of make Arlington fun again, but so, but, but that is just jokingly, you know. I, I know that there are people who appreciate this, certainly my colleagues do, you know, and, and I just had to give you like my honest feelings about it. I mean, it's generally easier to go along and get along, but hey, we're all friends here, you know, right? And I can tell you how I really feel about things, so at least you get my input because you didn't get it from, you know, one of these meetings. Although I will say that I, I generally, when I do go to these meetings because of my role, I tend to just listen rather than talk anyway, so you wouldn't have gotten it at one of those meetings. But, but thanks for all the hard work in this. And, and if for nothing else, you know, I want to support it because of the, the really good effort that went into it. So thank you.
Thank you.
So if you call it the Diggins Secret Garden?
Maybe the Diggins Party Garden.
Okay. On a motion, did I, on a motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Helmut, any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous vote. Look forward to see what brings next. Before we go to agenda item twenty-five, I'd like to go back to, thank you, Mr. Helmut, agenda item seventeen, appointments at the Clean Energy Future Committee, and I believe Dr. Polk is able to join us.
Hi, David. Hi, I apologize again for not being here earlier. I, I was, I'm on a road trip with my wife and my dog, and we were in the car, and I didn't realize that this was happening today. But I thank you so much again for agreeing to hear, hear my candidacy for the CEFC. I, I don't know how these normally work. I have to give an overview of who I am and why I'm interested and why I applied, whatever works for this.
That's perfect, that's perfect.
Sure, okay. So yeah, I've lived in Arlington for three years. I'm a town meeting member in precinct twelve. My research, or my background is in mathematics research, so I have a lot of experience that I think would be relevant to the CEFC, specifically report writing, science communication, grant writing, and my, my actual background is in data science, so I actually, my PhD was in environmental data science. So sort of aligned with the CEFC's goals, although I know that I probably will not be doing data science for this, this position. Like I said, I'm, I'm trying to get more involved in, in my, my town, you know, getting involved in local politics in the town, so I'm a town meeting member as of this past spring from precinct twelve, and I am a new enrollee in Civic Academy as of this fall. So, and the reason I'm excited about the opportunity to join the CEFC is that I've been possibly, over the past three years that I've been in Arlington, learning about the great decarbonization efforts that the town has been putting forward, including many of those that were headed, that I've learned since have been pioneered by the CEFC. So I would like to put my time and effort and skills however I possibly can towards the CEFC's awesome goals and the work that they're doing. So my main hope is to provide the time, my time and effort however they think would be most useful.
Thank you. And appreciate and thank you to your spouse and family for allowing us to creep into your away time, family time.
No, yeah, I'm excited to be here, and I'm so sorry again for being late.
Oh, no, no. You, you've doubly shown your commitment by making sure that you got here tonight, and it is much appreciated. So I will turn it to, over to my colleagues. Mr. Helmut?
Well, also, I know that I have a reputation, but I'll, I'll maybe take this one because, to move approval because Sam is a neighbor and a new, new meeting of, new member, town meeting member in precinct twelve. And I have to say that Sam, new to the neighborhood, dove right in, ran for town meeting, ran a great campaign, has already been really curious and productive, and I was really glad to see him apply to this. And since I'm a selectman member representing this electorally in the CEFC, I know that his skill set, which, well, I, Sam, I didn't know everything about you now, and I don't say, but I know you have a really great dog and a lovely wife, but this, this background is fascinating. And, you know, I can see, it's a really nerdy group, and the meetings are, there's a lot of really brainy people there with a lot of quantitative skills and a lot of specialty, and I think that you'll fit right in. So I move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll second that. So if you're a really nerdy group, BERT or T5?
Sorry, oh, okay. Are you doing a group theory joke?
When it comes to LLMs, BERT or T5?
Oh, BERT or T5, got it, yeah. I generally use like, use the GPT series for my, they're very good for helping code. That's, that's what I generally been using them for.
Got you, got you. Well, look, I mean, I think you're gonna, I think you're gonna be really good with this group. I'm looking forward to seeing what you do with them. And I have to say, you know, the work that you did as an intern, you know, at the Lincoln Lab, I mean, you know, that seems like the Holy Grail. It's like, how do you, you know, create a non-conflicting plan, given resource availability and constraints and whatnot, you know? So it's like, I, I really would like to find out what you, what, what you all did, you know, with that. So I'll, I'll follow up with you, especially since you're a town meeting member. So, so welcome aboard, you know, so thank you, thank you.
Happy chatting, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Decorsy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Polk, thank you for your interest, and I did see where you went to school undergrad, so I just have to say Meliora, and hopefully this is a Meliora moment for the Clean Energy Futures Committee, which is, for those who aren't familiar with the University of Rochester, it's Latin for ever better.
Oh, nice. Nice.
I'm actually at, in Rochester right now. That, we're, we're at that stage of the road trip, so, yeah.
Great.
Right out there.
Perfect.
I love it. Okay. On a motion by, to approve by Mr. Helmut to join the nerdy group, seconded by Mr. Diggins, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you so much, Dr. Polk, appreciate it. Again, thank you to your family.
Thank you, and I really appreciate all the selectmen. Thank you, and I really appreciate the select board's time. Thank you so much again.
We will now go back to the agenda. Agenda Item 24, discussion of lease of 85 Park Ave. Our town manager, Mr. Feeney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would first like to note that just briefly before the meeting, there was updated reference material put on Novus. Just before the meeting, I noticed an error in the calculation of the potential value of the parcel due to a change in the square footage that was used. It was the square footage of the entire parcel had been used for the calculation and not of the structure or the premises on the lot. So that changes the math rather significantly. But back to the matter at hand, the information before you is prepared by Deputy Town Manager Christine Buon Giorno, who has served in the leading effort to work on the leases for all of the town's rented properties. And the property at 85 Park Ave, as currently housed, is currently housing Arlington Community Media, Inc. Their lease is due to expire in the coming months. And following an earlier presentation last year from ACMI to this board about their funding challenges and what are now amounting to funding shortfalls, at that time, I mentioned the possibility of providing a degree of relief through seeking, when their lease was up, to pursue what we call a public purpose procurement, which would allow the town, with the board's approval, to put the property on the market via a public RFP. But to consider, in the responses that we receive, other elements more important than price. So instead of pursuing first and foremost revenue generation, that we could assign a public purpose and then pursue cost as a secondary factor in evaluating those proposals. So this would provide an opportunity. I think annually, we have been collecting roughly $45,000 in rent from ACMI. But if we were to conduct that procurement again, under the guise of a public purpose, it would allow us to consider a much lesser rent, thereby reducing their operating overhead and expenditures, which obviously impacts their bottom line. So with that, there is a proposed public purpose for the board to consider if this is a direction we wish to go in. And that would be that the lesssee, as advertised in our procurement documents, would need to promote the public purpose of providing educational, cultural, or community service activities to the residents of Arlington. So if we approved that language today, that would go into our notice that gets published into what's called the Central Register, which is a statewide repository for listings of this nature, for real property. And then, in our RFP documents, we would find a way to score applicants who submit proposals against that stated public purpose, not only to ensure it meets that public purpose, but to find who provides the most advantageous submission in accordance with that public purpose. So I guess in sum, I would just circle up to say that, you know, this would be an opportunity for the board to consider providing additional financial relief to ACMI. This was a strategy we had contemplated perhaps, you know, even before this time last year. And I, you know, will acknowledge that, you know, a separate request did end up finding its way before Arlington's annual town meeting this year, and was subsequently approved to provide $100,000 in funding to ACMI in the current fiscal year. So I just wanted to put that, you know, this is, had been a direction we had contemplated and discussed and were heading, but I wanted to acknowledge the fact that some other circumstances have changed with respect to town assistance being provided to ACMI in the current fiscal year. So happy to answer any questions.
Yes. Any questions, motions?
No, for me.
The motions to authorize the issuance of the procurement process that the manager outlined? Is there specific wording you need?
We would need to, and feel free to chime in Attorney Cunningham, but we would need to approve the public purpose procurement as listed in the memo provided to the board, so that exact language.
Okay, and I would ask Attorney Cunningham, do we need to make two motions or make a two-part motion to approve the procurement language and then to vote to authorize the issuance? Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe it's one vote. It would be to approve the public purpose as cited in the memo, and then approve the posting of that with the Central Register or the Secretary of State's office. If the board chooses to support that via its vote, then the town would be in a position to create the, impose this public procurement notice and allow for applicants to seek to take advantage of that public purpose application.
Does anyone want to make a motion on the three Ps to approve the public purpose in the posting? Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'll make the motion to authorize the issuance and posting of the public purpose procurement. And I think for us, we, Mr. McLeod was in here earlier, this is before town meeting took action, and that was one of the things that we discussed. So I think it's consistent. I view maybe what town meeting did was more one-time type funding, and this was something I think we, at least at the time, discussed, and we'll see if all members are willing to support this. But I was comfortable with doing that, giving their predicament that they were in, and I think we were consistent all along that we said that we would consider that. And I know they have a lot of other funding sources to find, and the number of cable subscribers continues to go down. I know it's a very challenging thing for them, but I think this is something we could do consistent with this statute.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll second it. I guess I'm quiet because I'm just not quite sure. I have a question, I just can't get it out. I can't figure out the question. But I just want, I'm trying to get it, is, what's the sustainable aspect of this? So on an annual basis, ACMI will benefit all?
So, thank you, Mr. Diggins, for your question. To use an example, in other municipalities, public purpose procurements have established rent of $1 for the use of a public space.
Right.
So if you look at what ACMI paid the town in rent last year was $45,000. If we were to support a public purpose procurement, you could consider taking that, the monetary consideration for the use of the premises, down all the way to a dollar, so that their operating overhead would be reduced in a corresponding fashion.
Okay, so I understood that. I guess I'm not understanding how putting, during the procurement process, makes that possible, whereas we can't do that now? I'm just, like I said, I have a hard time formulating a question because, you know, I guess I just don't understand enough about how to, enough about the process to understand how to phrase a question. I'm sorry.
All right, Attorney Cunningham?
There you go. Sorry, Madam Chair, I could unmute myself. Maybe I can be helpful, Mr. Diggins? You know, through the public bidding process provided for in Chapter 30B, I think Mr. Feeney hit the language correctly, and that's, the town seeks to obtain the most advantageous proposal. So if the public procurement, the public benefit process is approved, and it's filed with the Central Register, then the notices sent out, proposals are received pursuant to the notice, and the town will then select the one that's most advantageous. And in theory, if the board approves this educational benefit, the public process, then that's going to be something that's advantageous to the town in lieu of the money that it would have received if it was an open bidding to the highest bidder. That's what the statute provides, is that it's, there's got to be some benefit in lieu of the money.
Because right now, we can't charge $1. Is that the case?
That is correct. We have to charge what the market says it's worth, so this is to do it at less than market value.
So that's where my block, that's where my block was, because I thought we had the ability to do that. And so, I mean, I guess my concern is that you put it out to bid, and you know, you kind of don't know what's going to happen. We know, we're set to standards that, but we could end up in a situation, I won't say similar to what we were experiencing earlier, you know, this year with another location, but it does, there is a risk factor. But now I understand that it's the only way we can really bring the rent down for ACMI to a dollar is to go through this process. Thank you. There are times when I'm slow, and I appreciate everyone's intelligence.
Okay.
So I second it, and...
Yes, you did, okay.
Looking forward to voting for it.
Further questions or comments, Mr. Attorney Cunningham?
Sorry, Madam Chair, thank you, sorry to bother again, but I just want to make sure that's understood that this is, even if it's a public purpose type of lease that we're going to be noticing as a town, it remains a competitive process, and that other entities could potentially submit bids that serve that public purpose. So it's not necessarily automatically for ACMI, this 30B requires it be competitive, but it's just going to be in a different, different way. It's not going to be something that's seeking the highest dollar amount for the town, it's going to be something that seeks the most advantageous proposal, the most, you know, advantageous proposal, as Mr. Feeney said. So that, I just wanted to mention that as a supplemental comment to the board's discussion.
Thank you.
Mr. Helmoth?
Just a quick question, and I'm very happy to support this. Just the wording of the public purpose, is that, do we have discretion in, like, I noticed that that's not specific to what we might prioritize in terms of activities, specifically the kinds of things that ACMI does, that's my personal view. But are we limited in the boilerplate language that we're using here?
Thank you for your question, Mr. Helmoth. Well, I will defer again to Attorney Cunningham for an exact answer. My understanding is that the board does have discretion in this language, but the, the, sort of the statute that we're talking about, and the intent of it was such that you can't be so narrowly tailoring in your language that you ultimately exclude other potential proposers. So it does have to have some level of broadness to it, but it, because you can't sort of tailor it to only one party.
Thank you, that's helpful. No, that's the right thing to do, and it's the legal thing to do. And, you know, I have confidence that ACMI will submit a robust proposal, but I think that, as Attorney Cunningham mentioned, that still is and needs to be, and it is the public interest for it to be a competitive process. So anything I say doesn't, you know, I think, I think that, it gives me confidence that you will, Mr. Manager, you know, will, will take that responsibility seriously, as you have in other matters.
I do want to thank the town manager and town council for working on this, to take every step to make sure we comply with the procurement laws and other laws. I have been in communication with ACMI and Newham McLeod about what steps ACMI is taking, you know, moving forward with the PEG access funding, this additional funding, as well as the additional $100,000 that Finance Committee allocated. And I'll wait to see what fruit that bears out, but I know they're doing a lot of hiring, including a Director of Mass Development advocating for Organization for Community Media Massachusetts, which I myself would probably spend the money differently than that in terms of just keeping it Arlington-focused, as well as putting it, again, Arlington-focused to get as much bang for those bucks that we can get, especially with an override coming up in the future. And we can't just throw everything on an override just to throw it on. And, you know, I'm going to continue to have communications with Mr. McLeod and others. I envisioned a sort of different thing versus hiring an advocate for all of the community media, 352 communities in Massachusetts. But we're doing everything we can to try to find every penny, nickel, dime quarter. So on a motion by Mr. De Corsi, seconded by Mr. Diggins, any further questions and comments? If Attorney Cunningham says we're good to go, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Unless one of my colleagues tells me different, I think we have cleared the agenda all the way up to correspondence received.
That's true.
I would like to, on Agenda Item, oh, 25, I have it written out because I knew it was going to be at the end of the night. Well, I think the manager would agree with, since this is what I asked you to refer Agenda Item 25 to Town Council for opinion on jurisdiction. On the Agenda Item 26, the town manager indicated to me there's, besides move receipt, there's really nothing else that needs to be done on that. And the traffic calming, Agenda Item 27, the board, Select Board's Office is in contact with Ms. Duran, the Transportation Advisory Committee Chair, Mr. Stube, Stube is aware of this, but the proponent, Doran Donovan, was instructed to fill out the new online form that the Planning Department and John Alessi has established, so that's already begun. So as a formality, we will refer to Mr. Alessi. So, motion to receive by... Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Peace. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Hurd. Any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous vote. Ms. Mahon, new business?
The only new business I have is that Town Day is scheduled for Saturday, September 20th, and it's at 10:30 to 4:30 p.m. So if anyone in the public wants to mark their calendar to come.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mrs. Mahon. My distinct pleasure to announce this evening that Julie Wayman has been appointed as the town's new Deputy Town Manager and Finance Director. She will be replacing current Deputy Town Manager and Finance Director Alex McGee, who has accepted a job offer in another community and will be starting there soon. So we're preparing for that transition now, but we're very grateful to have had such a strong internal candidate who's been sort of an integral part of the town's finance team for really a number of years now, and has great insights into both our operating and capital budget processes, and really looking forward to working with her in this new role.
Mr. De Corsi?
No new business.
Fun time, Mr. Diggins?
Well, yes, because it's about Town Day too, and I just wanted to say that Select Board staff and the town manager, and Deputy Town Manager and Economic Development Coordinator have been doing a wonderful job along with Jeff Monroe in putting things together. All I've really had to do is schedule fewer meetings and make sure they last for even shorter amounts of time. And I think we're in a position where next year, I won't be needed at all. And I did hear something maybe about a Taylor Swift impersonator, maybe like a drag Taylor Swift impersonator. Is there any news on that?
No news.
No news?
Okay.
We tried. I'm leaving that one alone. And the person who's soon to take up residence down at the Ed Burns Arena?
No new business.
You nerd you, Mr. Helmoth?
This might be a first, and my new new business is going to be about baseball?
It's not baseball.
Mr. Hardest Swift. Now, the funny thing about this is, of course, I actually don't know the outcome, but I do want to congratulate the Arlington AU All-Stars, who advanced to the World Series, the Cal Ripken Junior World Series Tournament this weekend. I saw from the headlines that a different team won the World Series, but just getting there is an incredible achievement. there is an incredible achievement. And that's probably the most sports you'll hear from me in my entire term as a select board member.
And Attorney Cunningham, I'm going to let you do cleanup. You're the DH designated hitter. Any new business?
I like the sports reference, Madam Chair, but no, no new business. Apologize again for not being there in person.
No, but thank you for taking time out on your vacation. And please thank your spouse and family for allowing us the opportunity. And my new business, besides seeing everybody Thursday night at the Goals Meeting, which the manager and his staff have been working on, night and day, day and night. And I do want to thank the manager and Ms. Maher on, we've had several different discussions regarding the agenda and applicants and the use of pronouns, pronouns and the appropriate way to gather that information moving forward. And it certainly helps me as chair. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn by, motion adjourned by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mrs. Diggins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you.